This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
City Council meeting, I'll come to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Good evening, and welcome to our Monday, July 8 City Council meeting. Again, this is a reminder, we do have some seating across the hallway in 1301 and 1302. I understand they're having some technical difficulties with the TV over there, but we're working on it. And then we will also have somebody going back and forth and kind of keeping everyone up to date as to what's happening here in chambers. Again, appreciate all of you joining us here this evening, and as we go throughout the evening, we'll stay on our agenda. So, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson, Beaton, Benjamin, Bergy, Kristofferson, Emanuel, Gregert, Klinkhammer, Lor, Weld, Worthman.
Again, just a brief introduction as to tonight's meeting. City Council conducts public hearings, listening sessions, and public discussion where residents in our community are invited and encouraged to ask questions and weigh in on important decisions that we will be making at our legislative session either tomorrow at 4:00 PM in these chambers or in coming weeks and months ahead. We want to thank Valley Media Works for live streaming this proceeding to those of you not able to join us in person. To watch, please visit ValleyMediaWorks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. There's also simulcast at 101.9 FM. And you can find past meetings on YouTube under the Triple Valley Media Works channel. If you plan to address the council this evening, I will briefly review the protocol. Once an agenda item is introduced, staff will present on that item, and following the presentation, council may have questions for the staff member to clarify any issues. We will then open the item for public input. Once the item is open for comment, please come forward, one at a time. When you approach, please begin by announcing your name and your address, and then begin sharing your comments. We will welcome you to speak for five minutes. You'll see three lights before you. The green will come on once you start speaking. It will then turn yellow when you have one minute left. When the light turns red, that indicates that you've reached your five minutes, and I will politely ask you to bring your statements to a close. Sometimes council members will have follow-up questions for you, so please give us a moment before leaving the podium. If you wish to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period at the end of the meeting. If you haven't done so yet, there is a sign-up sheet for the comment period on the table at the back of the room, on the podium there right by the door. Lastly, if you're not comfortable speaking at the podium, you can fill out a comment form also at the back of the room, and those comments are then distributed to us, to the council members, prior to the legislative meeting tomorrow. As always, you can email or call council members outside of this meeting, and our contact information can be found on the city website or on the table in back as well. With that introduction, we'll get on to our first order of business. There's one item scheduled for a public hearing on tonight's agenda. Item number one, which is a public hearing regarding the city's intention to order the repair of sidewalk and curb and gutter according to Section 66.0907 of Wisconsin statutes at 29 locations beginning with 521 Second Avenue, parcel number 050147. Mr. Solberg.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This item is a public hearing for our yearly citywide sidewalk and curb and gutter repair program. Over the course of the previous year, we have taken complaints from residents when they encounter a trip hazard or a degradation in our sidewalk. We keep a list of those addresses, and once a year, we compile a project that addresses trip hazards and ADA noncompliance that's reported to us throughout the city on our sidewalk system. And then also, if we have some areas with curb and gutter that aren't draining that could pose a potential nuisance with either insects or just having what we refer to as bird baths, we fix those locations throughout the city as well. So this year, we have 29 locations. If approved by the city council, we will begin work on these later this summer and fall, and work will be wrapped up this year. With that, I'll take any questions.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Solberg? I don't see any. Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Again, I'll ask, does anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay, sure. Come on right up here to the podium.
Okay. Yeah, hi, my name's Kevin Landorf. We're one of the properties that are on the list. And to be honest, just looking--
Can you just give us your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, 4737 Paul Merlain.
All right, thank you.
And just really, is there an area that we can look at on a website or something that tells about the specifics of what needs to be done? Because it doesn't really say anything specifically, it just says that you're on the list and that there's an estimate of so much, and you can take care of it of yourself or not, but I don't really even know what to ask for if I have somebody else do it, because it doesn't say specifically what needs to be done.
Okay. Is that the only question you have?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just have Mr. Solberg come up, and I'll wait and see if there's anyone else that has any other questions, if that's okay.
Okay.
So, is there anyone else here that wishes to speak or have questions?
I would have the same question.
Okay, all right. Mr. Solberg.
Do I switch?
Sure. Okay, thank you.
So what we do is, we take complaints, and we have an engineering technician go out and look at the sidewalk to see what has heaved. A quarter of an inch with the Americans with Disabilities Act is considered noncompliance with the act, so we paint red lines on the panels that need to be replaced. We have an estimate of the square footage of the sidewalk and a conservative dollar per square foot amount to reconstruct the sidewalk. That's what goes into the estimate that gets sent to the property owners. By state law, the property owners have 20 days, once the repairs are approved by the city council, to hire their own contractor to do the work themselves or do it themselves. And if that's the case, it needs to be done with a quality that's suitable for city infrastructure, and also let our office know, and we will help with grades. We help establish grades, so we make sure the sidewalk is where it needs to be. Also, if you're planning to fix sidewalk on your own instead of having the city do it, and you're not able to do it within 20 days, we'll work with you if it's two or three months, as long as it's repaired this year. If it's not repaired this year, we'll include it on next year. If you have questions, you can call our office, and we'll send an engineering technician out to go over the panels with you on occasion, from the time we put the list together until it comes time for construction. Not very frequently, but conditions change, but we'll just re-verify that the length of the sidewalk that doesn't meet ADA is right, and then we'll go from there if a property owner would like to fix it themselves or have us fix that. If the city fixes it, it is assessed as a special assessment, and the property owner has 10 years to pay that off, or they can pay it off all in one lump sum, so.
Can I have a follow-up to that, or no?
Sure, could you come up, though, please? Could you come up to the podium, please? Thank you.
So, now that makes sense. I believe I know that area that's heaved, and we've talked to the people at the city for years, because there's a tree root that's pushing it up, and we've asked to have that tree removed for several years. And in fact, on the city's plan, it says it was already removed, but it's still there. And we had somebody out last summer, and they said, "Well, that tree's not there," but it's there. And in order to replace that section of sidewalk, you're going to have to remove the tree. That's all they got.
So I'll work with our forestry division and see if we can have somebody go out there. We also did, in years past, purchase what's called an air spade, so if you have a tree that's-- that roots are heaving like that, they can basically blow away the soil from the roots, and they can go in and surgically remove from the tree the roots that are causing the heave and still allow the tree to remain its viable. So if you would like to keep the tree, there is an option. If you would like the tree to be removed, it's been our practice to remove trees, especially if they're starting to heave a sidewalk before there's a problem or definitely after there's a problem, so that problem doesn't occur in the future. So I will definitely have our forestry folks reach out to you and work with you on that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Solberg? Do you want to come up, Jackie? Sure, thank you.
Good evening. Name is Jackie Pavalski. I live at 1715 Meadow Lane. And I too have received that notice, but it's based on calls to the department in terms of recognizing that hazard on the sidewalk. But I also had a question regarding the pooling of water, the stormwater at the end of my driveway, which consistently happens, and so I'm wondering if that is included in that I'm worried about the fact that, you know, they had said it was, you know, something with the tree or what have you, but the tree is gone. I don't have anything there. But the pooling of the water has gone on for quite a few years, to be honest with you, and it doesn't go down, and you're paying it on the water bill, too. And I, you know, encephalitis and a lot of other things bother me, the fact that that's standing water. It's better this year for some strange reason. It was worse, you know, last year, so I'd like to know if that is included, the curb and gutter, as well as the sidewalk repair? Because there's two arrows on the sidewalk. I brought pictures, too.
Can I see your assessment?
Yes, yeah. I have no qualms with that, but I'm assuming if the curb and gutter is fixed with that, because in talking with someone, they said the crown is there, it's recognized, you've been out there, and assessed it, you know, with the storm sewer. There are people with--
That does not reflect curb and gutter repair on there, but it's something we can look at.
Well, I've asked, I've talked to Jow for one, and that was identified, that there's a crown there that, you know, stops the water from going in each direction. It's supposed to go west. It does not. It pools right at the end of my driveway.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this agenda item?
I'm sorry, I was in the overflow room, so I'm not sure--
Yeah, no, we'll give everybody extra time tonight, so.
Okay, okay. So Bryce Rothwell, 1903 Meadow Lane, received a letter or notification regarding the sidewalk. I have a question, I don't know, maybe you left the room, but a number of years ago, I had requested for somebody to come out and take a look at the tree, and they did. And at that time, it was just barely starting. Now it's bad, but they said, you know, "We don't want to take that tree down, because it's a nice tree." Now there's a big issue, and I don't necessarily want to pay the $700 or so when it could have been resolved a number of years ago. And I've got two boulevard trees. The second one is starting at the point that I first notified the city, and so I'm looking for resolution on that, I guess.
I guess we could have Mr. Solberg, someone reach out to him at another time, or do you want to answer the question now, or?
I apologize, I was speaking with--
No, it's okay.
--the speaker. Was your question, you have a boulevard tree that's heaving as well?
We have one that's heaving, yes. I'll just briefly repeat. We had somebody from the city come out a number of years ago. My wife had called, I met the person there, and they said, "Too nice a tree." And at that time, the sidewalk was barely doing anything, but I could see the potential. And they said, "Too nice a tree, we don't want to take it down." And now we have this, and I have a second boulevard tree that's at that same stage as the first one was a number of years ago, and so I'm looking for resolution on, you know, I had identified the problem a number of years ago, and it could have been resolved without now fixing the sidewalk, so.
Are you on our list for this year--
Yes.
--for the sidewalk? Oh, can I get your name?
Sure.
And I'll talk with our community services and see if somebody from forestry can come out, and I know we had this discussion in years past.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this agenda item?
My name's Mark Lotto. I live at 1915 Meadow Lane, one of the properties addressed in the notice. I guess I'm just looking for clarification, more so on the criteria as to how the sidewalk deems replaceable. The section in our sidewalk that I can see is much less of a problem than some of the areas down the street either way, closer to the Metalview School and farther away from our property. You know, there's, I took pictures and measurements and stuff like that, and from the grade level at our house, it's only about an inch different. Down the street, there's places that are three, four inches way out of level, so I'm just wondering what the criteria is for replacing it, who determines that, and then where do we go from there?
Mr. Solberg?
The criteria with the Americans with Disabilities Act is a quarter of an inch deviation from being flat is a trip hazard and needs to be repaired. The reason why yours is on the list and your neighbor's on the street is, we received a complaint, your address was reported to us, we had an engineer/technician go out and measure it, found it to be a quarter of an inch. Your neighbors were not reported for that. We don't have the staff time nor the money to go throughout the city, go property by property, to look for all of these trip hazards, so that's why we rely on people when they report them to us, to make them known to us, and then we fix all of those that are reported to us.
Okay.
So that's the criteria, one quarter of an inch, where we go from here. You have 20 days upon completion of the hearing process in the city council to hire a contractor to repair yourself or repair it with your own labor. After 20 days has passed by state statute, then the city can make those repairs. If you're not able to repair it in 20 days, but you plan to do it in 30 or 40 days, let us know, and we'll work with you, and we're not going to be out there on the 21st day making the repair. We work with property owners to make sure that this process is amenable and as agreeable as possible with them.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to two items that we have on our public discussion. Item number one is public discussion on proposed redesign of the intersection of State Street and Roosevelt Avenue. Mr. Solberg?
All right, so, let me-- Thank you. This is the display of the intersection that was in the council packets. For a little recap of the process that got us to this point that we're at today, on March 12, the city council approved the State Street reconstruction project, starting from Garfield Avenue extending south to the south city limits of Eau Claire. With that, there were recommendations in the packet to the city council to include roundabouts in Lexington, MacArthur, and Hamilton. This intersection at Roosevelt was approved with the overall project with a roundabout that would require right-of-way, and the city council directed staff at that time to start reaching out to property owners in a fair and equitable manner with a final design for roundabout that would be located at this intersection, with the understanding that further city council action would be required to continue the right-of-way acquisition process to help facilitate that roundabout coming to fruition. On June 11, the city council voted to not continue that, the right-of-way acquisition process for this intersection. With that vote, staff started working on an intersection that would fit within the existing right-of-way constraints at Roosevelt Avenue and State Street while improving safety as much as possible for not only pedestrians, but also bicyclists and motorists as well. We had three public involvement opportunities in June, as timely as we could with groups that were most affected, but we wanted to make sure that they were in public venues so the public at large was able to participate. We went to the Third Ward Neighborhood Association meeting, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and then held an open house on the UW Eau Claire campus. What is before you is the design that we are recommending for the city council to consider. It's very similar to an earlier option that we had identified at Roosevelt and State Street with a few additions to that. Coming down north is to the top of your screen. Coming down the hill, we have a dedicated left-turn lane that goes onto Roosevelt. We have one lane each direction on State Street that continues through the intersection to the north. We have a pedestrian refuge island on the north leg of State Street. We're recommending a rapid rectangular flashing beacon. These are the signs that accompany the RRFB. We installed two of those systems recently, one on Farwell Street by the Park Tower Apartments, and also another one on Harding Avenue at Jefferson Street. And we're also recommending a paddle-mounted pedestrian crossing sign on the island, that is the pedestrian refuge island, that provides about eight feet worth of safety for pedestrians crossing the intersection. Also included, as we come down the hill from the south, traveling north with bicycles, we're recommending sheroes in this location. There was feedback for where the bike lanes end on State Street, particularly coming down the hill. Bartlett Court is at that location, and it is a sharp movement to make a left onto Bartlett Court. So what we had offered is assistance for those bicyclists that are the on-street bicyclists who are to extend the sheroes further south, or further north on the street to help illustrate to motorists that bicycles will be in the lane at this location. They also have, do have the ability to use a sidewalk in this location as well. Discussion, probably the number-one discussion with, for additional inclusions into our design, our recommended design that we have, centered around prohibiting the left turns out of Roosevelt Avenue onto State Street going north. We had extensive discussions at the Third Ward Neighborhood Association, as well as comments at the open house with, on campus in BPEC, that trying, there was not a strong consensus to restrict the left turn movements with a physical barrier. We have a number of locations throughout the city that do not have any physical barrier. They control movements with a sign only, and we have poor compliance if we don't have something that physically forces people to get into a lane to make a right turn only. Summit and Park, Summit Avenue and Park Avenue intersection, where we turn that into a right in, right out, has a physical barrier to prevent those left turns, and we've had great compliance with that. If you're at Belmont Street and Hastings Way, there's a no-left-turn-only sign there, and there's people turning left all the time. Same with Bleed Street and Margaret Street. So for that reason, we were not supportive of restricting the left turns at this point with signage only due to the enforcement concerns that it would take to encourage that movement to not occur. So that was something that was strongly considered by us, but we ended up not recommending that in the end. If right turns were sought to be controlled with a physical barrier, it would look similar to this. One request that we had was to provide a pedestrian refuge island on Roosevelt Avenue, and if you have an island in here that forces people to turn right or still allows them to go straight across Roosevelt, it makes it difficult to make that left turn, but this is a lot more, a lot more compliance-friendly. It's a lot more predictable. People won't come up here with the misunderstanding that they're able to turn left, and it provides this pedestrian refuge on Roosevelt. The downside with this is during those off-peak hours, if you're at 10 o'clock at night, if you're at 2 o'clock on the weekend, on a Saturday or Sunday, and you want to make that left turn out onto State Street, you're physically prohibited from doing that. But it does provide additional safety aspects for reducing that left turn, it allows more concrete to be brought out in front of the crosswalk, and it also provides a pedestrian refuge island on Roosevelt. But there was not, there was not significant support that it took, definitely not a majority of support, for permanently restricting that left turn movement onto State Street. So what we are proposing is to use wayfinding, similar to when you're in the Gulf Road area. When you're coming out of campus, try and wayfind people to the signals at Garfield, indicating that, you know, there are traffic signals if you want to exit the campus area at Garfield. And we have feedback that at Garfield, you know, why don't we look at trying to add a dedicated left turn at Garfield and keep a through-right lane? So Garfield is on our radar next year for reconstruction with the reconstruction of the university's parking lot. What we're recommending is to try wayfinding people up to Garfield, see if the inconvenience of sitting at Roosevelt, because during peak hour, you wait up to three minutes to make a left from Roosevelt onto State Street, to see if encouraging people to go to State Street via the signals at Garfield to make their left turn, re-timing the signals and providing that so it is a convenient left turn, to see if that is an acceptable solution to trying to control the left turn movements only with signage at Roosevelt. So, other options that we had considered or that were requested for us were speed humps, speed bumps, speed table, tabletop intersection. A lot of those treatments are more suited for local streets, lower-speed urban streets in the downtown areas, not ideally suited for an arterial street, so we did not include those in the recommendation. The speed feedback sign as you come down State Street remains in effect, so that will remind people of the posted speed limit of 30 miles an hour. And I guess with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Does council have any questions? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Solberg, and thank you to our community that's negotiating the right fit for this intersection, so I appreciate that. So many, I think all council members received an email from a constituent who kind of wears three hats, maybe three hats and one helmet, with riding her bike as her vehicle every day to work and serving on a bicycle pedestrian committee on campus and an advocate for public health and making sure the built environment is conducive to facilitating good, healthy choices in our community, including bicycle accommodations. She was strongly advocating for restricting the left turn lane from Roosevelt going onto State. And I'm wondering if you can spend a little bit more time sharing with council about maybe your understanding from the neighborhood meeting on, like what the vetting of this idea was, and what does it take if council decided to add this amenity in as a feature? What would it take and what would it look like for the city's work?
I think most people recognized the safety improvement during peak hours of eliminating the left turn, but there is a balance between reducing or eliminating that left turn during the peak hours versus losing that ability all the time for that. That was a discussion. There was also a discussion that we, in the past, had restricted the left turns out of Park Avenue. So in the past, there was left turn movements to get back towards the Water Street area summit or to go north at Park Avenue, then Garfield, McKinley, and Roosevelt onto the State Street summit. State Street summit. Park and summit are, is now a right-in, right-out, so that left three avenues for left turns out. And there was some concern that five years ago, there was four ways to get out and turn left, and if this were restricted permanently, there would only be two left turn movements out of campus. One would be McKinley, which is lightly used, and then the other would be Garfield, that has signals that help facilitate that movement. But there was some concern that, you know, maybe that's a little bit of a, too few of opportunities to make that left turn. From restricting the left turn movements with a sign only, there is much discussion about that. I'd like to try and control speed and movements in a, in a physical manner, to try and make it feel like you should drive slower instead of just a sign for that. So that's the reason why we didn't opt for restricting left turns from like 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, with simply a sign at this location, because I think you would get some, you would get some compliance with that, but you also would get some confusion with people coming down at the last minute, and some people expecting no left turns coming out of there, and some people expecting left turns, or hoping for left turns that were mistaken. So if you have an intersection that is the most intuitive and the most consistent to use, then you would control it with your physical environment, with the islands and the markings for that. The one thing, both McKinley, Garfield, and Roosevelt are streets that probably within the next, Garfield will be next year, two years, two to eight years will be in our program for being reconstructed. Again, the pavement's starting to fail. So that's one of the reasons why we're looking at wayfinding, to try and have people, you know, voluntarily get over to Garfield. If it doesn't work, we can come back when we do Roosevelt, and with our original proposal, we're matching into the minimum that we have to for our utilities. We're not changing anything on Roosevelt going this way significantly, and we could, we could revisit that in the future if there wasn't, if there wasn't a good outcome of what we're recommending this time, I guess. So it's a, it's a, it's a, there's a lot of, lot of, lot of valid arguments on both sides of that for this, so.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you for that information. Can you talk a little bit about the compliance confidence that you have with wayfinding signs and drivers voluntarily complying with that? And is staff preparing an amendment for the wayfinding signs?
The, the compliance with it, I think it's twofold. One is with seeing the signs themselves without being stuck at this intersection during the peak hours. The second part of it, so with wayfinding, it does help. You have new students that come in every year. You have a new demographic that would be using it. Your faculty are more long-term, and they would probably be the ones more, more accustomed to using this long-term, both in the past and then once we open it again and in the Would we get 50% compliance? I guess, I would hope the combination of the two would help, help those people during the peak hour that are making that left turn only do it once and shift over. There's, on average, during the peak hour, our traffic counts there. There are 45 people that make that left turn at that location, and in comparison, there's 80 up at Garfield. So if we had half of those divert to Garfield, you know, one every three minutes, I think it would be an improvement over what's there. But I, I can't sit here and tell you that I'm, I'm sure that we'll get 50% compliance or 75% compliance. It's something that we'll watch, and if, if the, this option were, were furthered with the wayfinding, and it wasn't, we're still having problems, it is something that we would continue to look at when we come with Roosevelt, so.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Solberg? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Solberg, I wanted to ask about the speed limits. There's been discussion about possibly reducing speed limits to 25 miles an hour. If that, if we were to want to recommend that, would that, could that be included in this language, or would we just request ordinance be brought back for our review?
Well, it would, it would be my recommendation with the, you know, examining a speed limit change on here to allow us to come in here and build it and get our, our traffic calming measures. There will be some things that will work against the, the traffic calming with new pavement. Right now, rough pavement keeps you going a little bit slower, but we're hoping the speed feedback sign, the lane of each, the lane in each direction going forward, that I guess it would be my recommendation to let us build it. Let's, let's do a speed study next spring to see how traffic is going through there for, for the speed that they feel with that speed feedback sign. If traffic is going with the way it feels, say that the posted speed is 30, and it's going at around 30 miles an hour or so with the, with the calming measures, you have a higher likelihood to request a speed change down to 25 if traffic, instead of going, you know, the 35 or 40 that it is now, is still going 32, 33, and you try to drop the speed limit down to 25 without doing anything else other than relying on enforcement efforts. There's statistically speaking, you will have a likelihood of increasing the crash rate on that because you'll have a difference, that speed variance of eight miles an hour over the speed, the posted speed is just too great, and it would be unrealistic to enforce at full-time. So I'm hoping with the, the dollar signs on the bottom of the speed feedback sign and the enhanced lighting in the RRFB, when it's activated, will help slow traffic down through there that, that it will, that it will be calmer for that. If you, if a speed limit change is an ordinance change, so there has to be a first reading of an ordinance change, and then it comes back for hearing and then a subsequent later. So that would require follow-up action, I'm not sure legislatively, and I guess I would defer to the city attorney, that it could, a speed change could be accomplished with the hearing and the vote tomorrow for this.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Solberg? Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Solberg. One of the questions that has come my way, I guess today and a bit at the neighborhood meeting as well, was the issue of lighting, and it's not described in detail in your narrative in the packet, so I was wondering if you could give us an overview of what is being proposed here in terms of lighting in this area and how that'll be different from today, and then how that may compare to Summit Avenue, which a lot of folks in the neighborhood would agree is quite bright and maybe creates too much of a, a different character for the neighbor than what folks would like.
So the lighting that the city council approved with the project in March did not change with, with the roundabout here. The, the city council approved decorative lighting, which are those lower lighting that you see from Garfield to the north. That remains with the project up through the Roosevelt intersection to better light the intersection and then go to the north. Our standard lighting is a Cobra head, a tall XL Energy typically provides those. As you go up the hill, the city provides those with a spun aluminum pole. There is one tall 30-foot light at each intersection along here, and that's our standard lighting policy throughout the city for that. Once we get south of Roosevelt, it's just our standard white-way lighting that you see out there currently, only it'll be replaced with LED lights that'll be more dark-skY friendly, similar spacing to what is out there currently, non-decorative, just lighting the hill going up there. So that, that's what remains in our packet. We had explored, there was some talk about the darkness on this side and especially the southeast or southwest corner of Roosevelt. We had explored, you know, the potentially including some white-way lighting along Roosevelt, and we decided that we would just stay with what was approved on State Street and not extend down Roosevelt to help with any pedestrian.
Another question?
Yeah, I just want to follow up. So how many lights will be at the intersection of Roosevelt and State? Do you just say there would be?
There'll be one tall one, one 30-footer, and then the rest that you see, like right here, right here are the small decorative ones that are tighter spaced, that are like 12 feet tall. And they would match in style as close as we can get to the style that exists currently north of Garfield. So they're not the, the 22 and 28 footers that are on Summit. The ones on Summit combine the short ones that we have here with our tall decorative ones into a taller one. But based upon the feedback on Summit with the whiteness of the light and the brightness of the light, that's something that we don't want to create here, so we're going to, we're looking for the warmest LEDs that we have possible. Additional shielding, the lights on Summit have a hat on them, but the, the hat doesn't block the back light as much as a full shield. So we're looking at shields to try and keep the light directed across the street and not back in the front yards. So we have a much better lighting outcome on this than we have currently on, on Summit. And then at night, we'll, we'll work and we'll experiment with the neighbors, and we contact law enforcement also for dimming them after a certain hour. The ones on Summit dim down to 20% power after a certain time at night, and that's another feature that we will have with these as well.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Mr. Solberg? I don't see any. Thank you. This is a public discussion, so if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item.
Hi, Kevin Rosenberg, 219 McKinley Avenue. And I'm here representing the Third Ward Neighborhood Association. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council for your vote last month to, to get rid of the roundabout and to listen to the neighborhood and do something a little different here. What I wanted to talk mainly about is the left turn off of Roosevelt. And obviously, you know, when you have a left turn movement there, it's, it's going to create some friction. But the problem I have with getting rid of the left turn right now is there's only two other options. One is the Garfield intersection, the other one's the McKinley. I live on, on the McKinley block, and I never come out on McKinley to try and take a left just because it seems like every time I do, I end up behind the bus. And the bus has the hardest time making that movement onto State Street, obviously, because it's such a long vehicle and a little bit slower moving. Garfield, where we think is like this great place to make a left turn, if you have a lot of pedestrians in the crosswalk, you might only get one left turn per light. So then Roosevelt almost becomes, you know, a better option because you don't have to wait for the light. And the other thing that we're missing here is if we stop making left turns on Roosevelt, the parking lot behind the nursing building, when, when class changes, there's a lot of traffic coming down Roosevelt towards State Street. Well, now they'll have to make a left turn onto Park Avenue. There's a, there's a parking lot on Park Avenue right there where there's a lot of cars climbing out of that thing at the same time. And then you've got cars coming down Roosevelt heading west that want to make either a right turn there or go straight, which holds up the left turn. So really, what I'm asking is that we leave the left turn now and we revisit it in the future. And, and one thing we might want to revisit in the future is maybe making McKinley Avenue the, the street with the light on it, stopping parking on that street and having a dedicated left lane turn there. And what this would do is, instead of walking from Roosevelt now, you'd only have to walk to McKinley, or if you're at Garfield, you would only have to walk one block to McKinley instead of asking students to walk from Roosevelt all the way up to Garfield, which they're not doing right now. So we did vote on this as a neighborhood association after quite a bit of discussion. This was the main item that we discussed, and we voted seven to one to, to keep that left turn in there for now. There was a lot of people that had attended that meeting that had been very involved, and I decided we should probably let the room vote, and the room voted 16 to three to keep that turn there as well. So that is, that's why I came here tonight, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Question? Sorry. Councilmember Emanuel.
President Weld, thank you, Mr. Rosenberg, for coming down tonight. Do you recall if the neighborhood talked about perhaps a hybrid solution of putting up wayfinding signs?
We absolutely talked about no-left turn from 3:00 to 5:00 from, you know, whatever the school year would be. We did discuss that. Dave has always told us that, you know, that's hard to enforce, and that was the same discussions we had at the Park Avenue Summit turn as well, where some people said, can't we just put up a sign so that, you know, in June or in July, when, like it is right now, there's hardly any traffic down there, that we wouldn't force people to make a different turn. But that was kind of shot down just because of the enforcement problem.
Thank you.
And we still are, we still were very open to that as a solution as well.
Any questions for Mr. Rosenberg? Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening.
Good evening. Sharon Hildebrandt, 426 Summit Avenue. I want to thank the council, actually on behalf of the neighborhood, for the time and consideration you've given the, the construction project on State Street. We very much appreciate that you, you have reviewed this and looked at it, and we very much appreciate your last vote on this as well, so I want to just say thank you to that. Speaking on behalf of several people in the neighborhood, the lighting issue does concern people, I think because of the experience we've had on Summit Avenue, the over-bright lights. And in the packet that you received in March, the white-way lighting that's discussed and still being discussed was only to be installed from Bartlett up the hill. And that is pretty much a consensus in the neighborhood as what we'd like to see. I, I don't believe it has been approved for the intersection at Roosevelt, and we're hoping it isn't approved. It, we hope starts that white-way lighting, based on this experience that's happened in the neighborhood on Summit, is not residential-friendly. And we, we feel that it was not part of the original plan that you approved of in March. And I've got actually some handouts. I'm just going to give these to you as well, if that's all right. This is some of the language, too. This is for the council. Is there, that's the, that's the March 5 approved plan. And then, if I can use the camera here. I'm not sure which way we put this. So I guess. This was, this was the language that was included in your March packet. And this is pretty much what the neighbors are hoping is the result. The project proposed to extend the pedestrian-scale lighting from Garfield Avenue to Roosevelt in a style that matches existing pedestrian lighting north of Garfield. The project also proposed reinstalling the non-decorative white-way lighting currently present between Bartlett Court and Claremont Avenue. And then additional lighting was at the roundabouts further up the hill. The only reference to white-way lighting was up the State Street hill. Roosevelt was not the location for white-way lighting. And so what we felt was going to occur was that the, the sort of more residential-friendly pedestrian lighting, like we have at Lincoln, for example, was going to be the result. As I mentioned, white-way lighting is not compatible in a residential area. And because State Street, like, like Summit, is largely a residential street, we feel that the decorative lighting, the shorter poles for the intersection lighting, few intersection lights, is, is desirable. So accordingly, on behalf of the neighborhood, we're hoping that you follow the original plan, put the pedestrian lights in, that are in the neighborhood already, and limit the white-way to the State Street hill. And I think we have some visuals, too, that are important showing. I think just pictures say so much more than words. But we have another speaker who's going to show you what those, what those LED lights look, especially the over, overly powerful ones, so. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Solberg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just going to leave that up there.
Hi. Hi. My name is Laura Buckholz, I'm 1604 State, and I just wanted to punctuate what Sharon was saying about the lighting. We do have some concerns about the lighting. Listening to Dave is about, talking about this, it somewhat helps a little bit, but I just wanted people to see exactly what we're talking about, the kind of lighting and, and what could happen, even when you Even when you do have decorative poles, it doesn't mean you necessarily have decorative light, because it depends on what bulb is in there and what's coming out of that light. So just to start off, I just wanted to, I don't know if you can really see that, but I live on State and Garfield, and I just, I have a patio, I have a front yard, I have no backyard, so I have no escape from whatever happens with this lighting. So I just recently made it into a little room, and I'm happy with it, and it's a happy place. This is kind of dusk, and you can see that the lights on State are already on, and it's, you know, it's doable. Not everybody wants to live on State, but there's things you can do to make it homey, and I'm trying to do that. So here's how things look right now. Okay, so LED lighting on Summit, which is, at this point, last year, at, let's see, 4,000K, coming into somebody's living room. So that's pretty bright. The last time I saw a light like that, I was living in New York City, and that's what would happen when they were filming something on your street. That's what it would look like, and it was temporary, thank God, because nobody would stand for it, even in New York City, the brightest city probably in this country, if not the world. And that's bright light in New York City, and it's a very bright light in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. So even when you turn that light down to 20%, so now we're down to 800K, it still looks like they're filming an episode of Sex in the City. And if that's going to be in my front patio, I imagine I'm never going to go outside again. I'm not the only one who has a front patio. I have some very nice students who live next door to me, and they're out there talking at night, too, playing the guitar and hanging out and doing what they do. And with this kind of lighting, it's just, I lose a room, and I, I don't know, I think I lose more than that. So I want to make a distinction between decorative poles and decorative lighting. So LED, whether you put it in a decorative pole or one of those things that looks like something from War of the Worlds, it's still LED lighting. So if it's 4,000K, it's almost unbearable, and if you bring it down to 20%, it's still kind of unbearable. So I want to point out that one of the things in the packet, in the original plan, called for extending that decorative lighting that's currently on State Street through the rest of the corridor, this being, that's being redone. So that's actually high-pressure sodium light coming out of those lovely lamp posts, and it looks good. And so my query is, why not just extend those the rest of the way down State? If we're going to spend time trying to match it exactly with an LED light that might not work out and might actually be blasting people's eyeballs, why not actually just use the high-pressure sodium that's already in the lovely lights that are farther down, farther north on State, and just bring those three blocks south to the end of Roosevelt? So that's, that's my query to you, and that's my hope that we can consider doing that. I understand that they're not as cheap as LED lights, but I would ask people to consider, too, that until a few weeks ago, we were considering spending $70,000 on a roundabout, and also the lights that are required by a roundabout, and also thousands of dollars required by property acquisition. So there might be some money for decorative lights that match what we already have farther down the street, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Any questions from this?
Questions?
Thank you for coming up. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Liz Weickert. I live at 304 Roosevelt Avenue. I think we've, if I have that the right way. This is my house right here, and this is our bedroom. This is Stacy Haslow's house. This is Claudia. I'm not sure of her last name, but her bedroom is here. And then Torres's living room is right here, and their son's bedroom is here. So we are asking for residential lighting and not this bright lighting. We're hoping that it keeps with the neighborhood. I'm just reiterating what most of my neighbors have been here to say. And I just wanted to point out that bright lights encourage speed. When you're on Claremont, you're going fast, it's well-lit. When you drive through a neighborhood and things are a little dimmer, people drive slower, they tend to, you know, hopefully follow the speed limit a little more. And we are trying to encourage a reduction in speed down State Street, so I'm hoping that you will consider that when planning the lighting. And again, my neighbor Stacy, who's across Kitty Corner, she sent you all an email reiterating the same thoughts, that she'd like that, to see that lighting neighborhood-friendly. Thank you.
Any questions from this way? Let's see. Thanks for coming up. Anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jake Rassie. I'm here representing the UW Eau Claire Chancellor's Office, and I want to start by thanking Dave and the city team that's worked so hard to collect and collate all the public data about the proposed changes. With that being said, we are supportive of the changes as proposed, particularly as you look at this intersection as a major gateway to the campus and a historic neighborhood. Improving safety outcomes for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists is absolutely essential, and we believe this plan does that. So thank you for your consideration, all the time and hours put into this.
Any questions for Mr. Rass? Thanks for coming up.
I have some handouts. Is the best way to circulate them?
Sure.
Is there a display?
Just give them to Ms. Merle here.
You can put these, these are two under the display, and for members.
I can just dig with those for you.
There's two copies. Why don't you put this one first? These things are. Okay, I'm here to speak primarily about the context of this plan.
Can I, can I say your name and your address?
My name is Sean Hartnett. I've lived for 35 years on Gilbert Avenue, just east of Strait, in the heart of this project zone, and have commuted by bike or walking every one of those times. And as the title, truncated title, I got a new printer on here, the context of increasing the amount of traffic and the speed of going through what is the largest school in the western half of Wisconsin. If you look at the western half of Wisconsin, UW Eau Claire is the largest school in the second half of Wisconsin, and this plan looks to put more traffic at a higher speed through the second, the biggest school district in western Wisconsin. When we go through other schools, we take all sorts of remedy remedies to make it safe. And in this case here, we need to look at alternatives to diverting traffic. State Street is closed now. Instead of coming down State Street Hill, which even with the improvements, is a marginal road, the traffic is going up Brackett Avenue, which for those of you who don't remember, 50 years ago, that was a US highway, that was our interstate, and it was upgraded to have a grade that will handle every single semi that went between Minneapolis and Madison or Chicago, went up that hill. That is an engineered grade to handle enormous amounts of traffic. The biggest problem we have in Eau Claire is we revitalized Eau Claire, downtown Eau Claire, which means we got a lot more traffic on State Street. What is lost in this, as everybody's talking traffic, is that the heart of this, the Third Ward and the student neighborhood up to the north, has the most predictable commute of almost any place in the city. You could take a city of that size because 70% of the population, as these arrows move across and down to the campus. You take any other neighborhood, people are going all different directions. In this neighborhood, fundamentally, you've got probably 2,000 people crossing State Street each and every day, and we're looking at 10,000 cars. Now, what I've done here is systematically look at the intersections. Hopefully, we can improve this one down at the end. But the problem is, we have some horrible intersections up here. And guess what? I've lived here for 35 years, and 35 years ago, the same traffic patterns of pedestrians and bikers moved to campus, and yet we've got a disaster zone at our intersections. We have crossings like here that just have a crosswalk, three roads, three lanes of traffic, and you have to rely on eye contact. Broken off on the end of it here, these red ones, all of these intersections, the only way you get across is making eye contact with the driver, and every driver. And you see how hard it is, one person, two person, three lanes. This one here on Park and Summit, somebody's going to go to the hospital, get killed there because they make eye contact with the first lane, and they start to cross, and the second car goes over. Same thing in this location here. That's why they get low grades. Look at Gilbert Avenue, the street where I live on. And again, here's Gilbert. All the students that live there and up there come down Gilbert and State. And we've got the Wild West there. There are no controls whatsoever. There's one painted sidewalk like this, and the sides sidewalks on Gilbert, well, they faded out. The city is so concerned about pedestrians here that we haven't repainted those intersections in 15 years. And yet each and every day, people go on those side streets, working up State Street. State Street is one of our most heavily populated pedestrian walkways. Why? The largest school in western Wisconsin is located right there. With all the tech, even though we dispatched them about the traffic circles, where do pedestrians cross the traffic circles? How do bikes get across the traffic circles? And bikes is another issue. Most cities start commuting around schools, putting in traffic lanes, putting in crossing lanes. Now, what I've done is systematically look at each and every one of those intersections in here. Even the stoplights are poor because the walkers get short shrift. When the light changes, the first people to go are the turn signals, in this case here. Got to wait a long time to go through it. Most students don't do it. So if this stoplight is occupied, they'll go down to Park and they'll take their chance crossing there on eye contact.
Mr. Hartnett, if I could have you wrap up.
Okay, fundamentally flawed. We need to look at diverting traffic up Brackett. We need to look at State Street. 35 years, and we've got some of the poorest intersections around the highest area. We need a big context. We're looking at these minor areas here. We need to divert the traffic, we need to slow it down with flashing lights. The flashing lights that we have on the Brackett Street Hill, on the top of Jefferson, that's a very safe one. We need those at Park, we need them at McKinley and Garfield, in this case here. The second handout I gave you was how to put bikes on State Street.
Mr. Hartnett, if I could, we have a lot of people that wish to speak tonight, so...
Here's the irony of it. I counted every single foot of bike lane in that whole area populated with students all going to campus, and there's not one. There's not a zero. There's a zero feet of bike lane in that whole area. You tell me that we're looking at this comprehensively, concerned about bikers, concerned about pedestrians, maybe you don't count them as residents because they're just here.
Thank you, Mr. Hartnett.
Yes?
Did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Hartnett.
Councilmember Emmanuel.
Thank you, Council President Welt. I'm wondering if we could please have, just encourage our speakers to stay at the podium. I think it very much helps people who are listening to be able to hear the microphone for people who are watching this at home, and perhaps use the little table nearby to help point out, maybe we could leave an extra pen there if we needed to. I think it's important to point out things that are on the screen, and perhaps both could be accomplished by staying at the podium.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Anyone in the hallway, or are they working in the back room now?
If they are not, then I'll check quick, but I do not believe there's anyone.
Okay. No, that's it. I guess, Ms. Merle, I guess he checked already.
Thank you.
All right. We will close that item of the public discussion and move on to agenda item number two. A public discussion on approving naming the Forest Street Special Area to Veterans Tribute Park. Mr. Pippinger. Good evening.
Council President Welt, members of City Council. I think we might be having technical difficulties, so I did bring a backup. Tonight, we are looking at a naming request for the Forest Street Special Area, and I thought it would benefit especially the new City Council members to get a little bit of history about how we got here today. An MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, was signed on May 10, 2017, which outlined the Veterans Foundation to fundraise for new amenities in the Forest Street Special Area Park area. Those amenities included a trail that would link our Hybridge Trail to our Phoenix Park area that currently does not have a connection to it. Additionally, it included a gathering area for the veterans and their families to reflect and remember their loved ones on ceremonial days. The additional amenities that would be fundraised for would be lighting in the park along the trail, including a paved parking lot area for, which would actually be used by not only the park users, but also by city employees that are employed at the central maintenance facility. Also, a restroom would be constructed, and then monuments that would reflect the wars and conflicts that the veterans from Eau Claire and the city of Eau Claire and Eau Claire County that have been involved in, through the history. These improvements would cost approximately $2.2 million, and that's an important number to remember because that, that did go into our determining whether the naming process would be significant enough to, to look at. A site plan was approved on February 12, 2019, so just recently, we looked at that, and construction is planned for Phase One this summer that will construct the trail system and also the gathering space. Looking at also, yeah, there's another little history I want to cover again, too. So the request for the naming came to the Community Service Department on March 10, 2019, from the Veterans Foundation. The request was reviewed for appropriateness and qualifying name requirements by the department, and the Waterways and Parks Commission heard the naming request and moved to the next phase on March 27, 2019. That started a 60-day public comment period on March 28 and ended on March, on May 26. The area that you're looking at is the Forest Street Special Area on the map. It's outlined in red. That's the area that is west of Forest Street, east of the Chipper River, south of the parking lot that is located at the central maintenance facility, and then north of William Street. The highlighted area that you see in yellow is the area that the community gardens are located in. Currently, the city has six community gardens within the city of Eau Claire. We have agreements with all those. One of the misinformation that was out there was that somehow the gardens were going to be displaced, and the only way that that could happen is through the City Council action because we have an agreement through them. So that, that wouldn't happen with the renaming of the park. So, and then what we also did was, we got information on this property to see what the value was. It's valued at $1.4 million of the 16.8 acres that are there. We'll go through a little bit on the naming process and the policy. The purpose of the policy is to establish standard procedures and guidelines for naming of public parklands and facilities owned and operated by the city of Eau Claire that are under the jurisdiction of the Community Service Department. The authorization of... The authorization of the policy, the naming of the site shall be the function of the Waterways and Parks Commission. So after it is determined by the department whether the naming is justified and it's appropriate, it goes to the Waterways and Parks Commission for their review. At that point, they move it on to the next step of going to a 60-day comment period. That's very important for us, because that gives the community a chance to weigh in on the renaming of the park. All requests for the proposed naming must go through the Waterways and Parks Commission and forwarded to the City Council for final approval. The objectives of the naming policy is to provide name identification. We have 52 parks in the city of Eau Claire. Out of those, we have 21 of them that are named after a street or geographical location, and we do that for a reason. We need to have some type of nomenclature for the area, so we can provide a reservation system, and also for our maintenance. It's important that we have that. So whenever you see a park that's named typically after a street or a location, it was named because of, for convenience for the park system to identify it. The other objective is to provide citizen input. This process would not have just gone from a request to the Community Services Department to Waterways and Parks and the City Council without that. It's in the policy, and we would not be able to afford it that way. And then it also ensures that the naming is controlled by City Council with recommendations coming from the Waterways and Parks Commission, with advice coming from the Community Services Department. So how did the process work? A request in writing was directed to the Director of Community Services, in that it provided a name option that the Veterans Foundation gave. That was reviewed to make sure that, again, as I said earlier, that it was appropriate, and it met the criteria. Also, it was discussed that a monument sign to identify the new park name would complement that area, and that was something that the Veterans Foundation agreed, that they would provide a sign for the park. And then it was determined whether the list of qualifying names, and it was submitted to the Waterways and Parks Commission for review. Under the qualifying names, there are five areas that we looked at, that are part of the policy, looking at places and features. An example of some places and features that we would look at for naming would be any type of neighborhood, street name, and that's basically one of the things we look at when we have a, we don't have a request, we name it after a street or in a neighborhood area. Historic events would be examples of battles and discoveries. Organizations would be civic or veteran. People would be examples of large donors and local war heroes, and great ideas, look at ecological independence and peace. The criteria that we looked at is an individual or organization that contributed significantly to the acquisition or development. In this case, it should not be less than 50% of the value of the property. The value of the property, as I mentioned earlier, is $1.4 million. The contribution that is being fundraised by the veterans group is $2.2 million, so significantly over the 50%. And also outstanding accomplishments by an individual in the community, or an individual who provided an exceptional service to our park system. So the 60-day public comment period, as I mentioned, started on March 28. We asked the public for comments to be sent to an email address, or by phone, or US mail. We wanted to make sure that if folks didn't have a computer, that they had an opportunity to reach out to, excuse me, reach out to us. The public comment period ended on May 26. The results of the 60-day public comment period, we had 206 total responses. 179 of those, or 87%, were in favor of the naming change. 17, or 8%, were against the naming, and then 10, or 5%, were other. We had a difficult time determining whether they were for or against it, but they did have a suggestion on a different name. There were four responses that came in after the deadline date. Two were for in favor of the naming, two were against, so they didn't, we didn't count them, but I do want to let you know that we did get four that came in after the May 28, 26 deadline. This went to the Waterways and Parks Commission on June 26. The vote was seven not in favor, three in favor of recommending a naming at their meeting. A motion was made to have the groups get together to see if any compromise could be reached, and at this moment, I don't know if that has occurred at this time. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does Council have any questions for Mr. Pippinger? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Welt. Mr. Pippinger, thanks for your presentation and extensive background on this. I wanted to just ask a couple of questions. One, regarding the 60-day comment period, there was some confusion about that, I think. It was mentioned at the Waterways meeting, I believe it was two weeks ago now, by Mr. Beckfield, that the comment period had been extended beyond 60 days. Is that accurate? Was that accurate? Did that happen?
No, that did not happen. Nothing was extended.
Okay. Second one is, another mention came up in that meeting, that there is a veterans park in Eau Claire. That's correct.
That is correct. We do have a veterans park that land that was donated years ago. It's located off of Race Street on the west side down in Shawtown area. It's an area that frequently gets flooded. It's in a flood plain that we don't control, and it isn't a park that we have any type of amenities, because it wouldn't be, it'd be very difficult to maintain that in that certain location.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Pippinger? Councilmember Beaton.
How much of the $2.2 million that is being dedicated, is dedicated to park improvements? I know a lot of that money is for artwork and statues, which is great, but I'm just wondering how much of that is for park improvements?
This is what was approved, can I get back on? At the February meeting where we approved the site plan. This is what was approved for the trail connection and the gathering space. That's approximately $700,000 in those improvements. And the main parking lot, and this would be Phase Two, and this is a possibility that this could get done this year, if the bids come back very favorably. But this is another $250,000 for the lighting, and then also the main parking lot here, that would pave that area for not only the park users, but also our employees at Central Maintenance Facility. Phase Three would be the public restroom area. That would be approximately $200,000. So out of that, that would be the, certainly the park improvement, so you're, we're looking at about one point, probably about 1.2, 1.3 million.
Okay.
And then the rest of it would be, part of it would be the military monuments, that would be part of the park, and that was about 1.1 million.
Certainly.
I have another question. There was a, there was a leader telegram letter that went out a couple of days ago, that implied that this project couldn't move forward until this park was renamed. Can you clarify whether that's true?
No, I don't believe that's, I mean, in my opinion, no, it's, we can, I mean, certainly, we can construct those items. It would be up to the Veterans Foundation if that is something they want to do, but certainly we can construct the amenities that we're looking at without the naming, but it's up to them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Silver? Councilmember Emmanuel.
Thank you, Mr. Pippinger. Question about the process. It seems that after the name is proposed, that there isn't really a built-in mechanism for groups to come together to say, yeah, we hear some feedback, and we'd actually like to change it. Can you talk to Council a little bit about where is the opportunity in the process for perhaps disagreements to be considered, and then ideas reconciled for a better, a more agreeable solution for community members?
I think the difficulty here lies in the group that's fundraising the money versus groups that may not be fundraising the money to get part of the name.
Can I speak up?
I'm sorry. I think the issue here is with the group that's doing the fundraising versus those that perhaps aren't part of the fundraising to get together. I think that was part of the recommendation that the Waterways and Parks Commission was looking at in the motion, that they wanted the groups to get together and talk about it, to see if there could be a reconciliation on that part. But the process of the 60-day comment period is where the public can get their input. Doesn't really cover whether groups that are part of the park that would have an input into it. We have several things, you know, with our parks that, give an example with Carson Park, it's called Carson Park, but we have the Paul Bunyan Camp within the Carson Park, we got the museum within Carson Park, we got the Chippewa Valley Railroad in Carson Park that we have agreements with. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Pippinger? Mr. Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Welt. Mr. Pippinger, following up on Councilmember Beaton's question, I think there was some confusion in the community, and maybe you can clarify this, but saying that folks couldn't weigh in with the Waterways and Parks members outside of the 60-day comment period, and my impression is that if it's a publicly noticed issue, and they're representing the public in that capacity, that folks can reach out at any time, including at the meeting, to share their opinions, which is what happened. Does that seem, nowhere in the policy does it say you can't comment outside of the 60-day window.
That's correct. I mean, the 60-day comment period is what we were taking in comments about the naming part. The public hearing that we had, certainly, that's what we invite people to come and voice their opinion at the public hearing. So certainly, that doesn't prevent anybody from talking and commenting to those meetings.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Pippinger? Councilmember Verdi.
Thank you, Council President. I was just curious, is there any way to find out with the feedback during that 60 days, where it came from? Usually when people give public comment, we, like, here they have to state their address, and in emails, or the electronic form, they state their address. Is there any way where we know where the public comments came from within that 60-day period?
I would have to see if we could find that information. I know the majority of the responses came from email. We didn't specifically ask for addresses and locations, because it is part of Eau Claire County that also is contributing to the project, but it's not only the city, but it's a county veterans tribute.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Beaton.
When we approved the MOU, was with, kind of knowing the significant investment, was there any expectation of park renaming within our MOU?
No, we didn't have anything on that in the MOU. That wasn't part of it. And at that time, I think it would have been maybe inappropriate, because we hadn't started any of the fundraising to date, and at this point, they've, from the last figure I have, is that they've raised $1.4 million, and the project is going to happen this summer. So a significant part of the, you know, the trail and the gathering area, which is estimated at about $700,000, is going to be put in, which, at that point, it does take us to even add 50% of what the value of the park is currently estimated at.
If I could have a follow-up?
Sure.
I guess I'm just asking, you know, we've been talking about this project for a long time, and it's been an exciting project for the City Council, and I know on the Waterways and Parks Commission, it's been exciting, too, and we've approved this project, and I think that there's some kind of like cross signals about who's expecting what, and I'm just trying to get to understand kind of where that came from, and I think that there are a lot of people, both on board, like, city boards, and also within the community, with maybe the neighborhood group or the garden group, that had seen this project, seen the MOU, and then were surprised to hear that there was this, some expectation that a donation means full rights to name a park. And so, do you know, do you know, like, how that, those signals might have been crossed, or was that somehow communicated before the park naming process began?
No, we, until the request came in for renaming, it hadn't been in part of any agreement that we had.
Okay. Could I have one more question?
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any other examples? Can you give an example of a park that's been renamed because of a significant donation?
That's hard to do, because most of it is land donations. We haven't had one quite like this. In fact, this was brought up with the Jeffers Park, with the complex that was put up there. There was over a half a million dollars that was raised and put into those ball fields up there. It's a beautiful complex. But at the time, they didn't meet the criteria of the naming, of the value of the land, so they didn't move forward with it. Most of the time, I'll give you an example of where a park did come in, was a land donation that we have, is the Kaiser's property and the Domer property. They gave the property to the city, based upon that the naming would be in memory of the families.
Any other questions for Mr. Pippinger? Councilmember Verdi.
So, they've raised $1.4 million, about? Is that what you said?
That's the last estimate that I saw.
And then I was curious, how, and the county donated or gave money towards it? Do you know, remember how much?
County donated $225,000 this year, and another $225,000 next year, for a total of $450,000.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Lor.
Thank you, President Welt. Mr. Pippinger, keep coming up on the emails, say that the original proposed names as for Veterans Tribute Trail. And then now, an email came up, say that this name, Veterans Tribute Park, had been, just came out in March this year. Is that true? Can you tell, get a little bit of history on that? When the first proposed the name, and now why it has been changing? Public speaking out there say that misleading on the name, so could you elaborate on that a little more, please?
Certainly. The Veterans Tribute Trail was part of the original Memorandum of Understanding back in 2017. That was just for the trail. There wasn't a request at the time to rename the park. The park is considered a special area. We call it the Forest Street Special Area. And the reason why we call it a special area, it doesn't rise to the level of a community park. We expect to have certain amenities within that park. It's large enough, it's 16.8 acres in size, but it doesn't have a restroom, or a pavilion, or any of those amenities that we would see that a community park would bring people in. The name request for the park didn't come to fruition until March of this year. That's when the Veterans Foundation... Foundation requested to name the park from the Forest Street Special Area to the Veterans Tribute Park. The Veterans Tribute Trail would be within the park.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Pipinger? Thank you. So, again, we have a large turnout this evening, and a lot of people that I know that wish to speak on this agenda item. So if you could bear with me for just one minute, a couple of things that I just want to clarify. One, that the agenda item is the application for the naming of the park. And so, really, that's what our public discussion and our comments are centered around, is the naming of the park, and whether or not those that are here are in favor of that or not in favor of that, and why. I ask that you please understand that there are people here that are in favor, and there are people here that are not in favor, and there is going to be a difference of opinion. So I hope that we can be respectful and courteous, and I'm confident that this community can be and will be. But understanding that there will be people speaking, and I would appreciate that we're not interrupting those people while they do speak. My job, obviously, is to make sure that everyone gets a chance to have an opportunity to speak their mind, and I want to make sure everybody has that chance. So I would ask that we refrain from applause until after, until the end, rather than applauding each person that comes up to speak. Again, allowing us to get through as many people as possible so that everyone does have a chance to speak to this item. So with that, I will open this up to the public. And again, it works well if we can form a line. If there's going to be a lot of people speaking, we can start over here on the left-hand side, and I welcome the first speaker. Good evening.
Good evening, Eau Claire City Council. Thank you, Mr. Pipinger, for that thorough presentation. My name is Angela Deutschlander. I'm a 27-year resident of Eau Claire at 4004 Clay Street. I'm vice president of the Veterans Tribute Foundation. As a foundation with seven board trustees and two committee advisors, we all have the same goal in mind, to create a legacy project that Eau Claire County can be proud of while serving the men and women that have served us. Having the opportunity to hear the opinions from the Parks and Waterways Meeting on June 26th in regards to the naming rights, I realize there are some glaring misconceptions circulating about this project. I would like to take the time to clear some misinformation in the hope that an informed decision can be made about our name request. One major misconception is about the naming of the Forest Street Special Area. It has been said that we should not have the right to name the entire space, as it contains gardens that have been there for many years. We agree, and we are not trying to name the entire space. We have made it clear in our plans and presentations that we are only using part of the land. Our directive from the City of Eau Claire was the portion of the land being used by gardeners was not to be encroached on, and they have a separate memo of understanding, and at least with the city. We are only asking to name the space we are developing on the north and east areas of the property. We have planned the elements of the tribute to coincide, but not take over their working space. The gardens have their own name and have been referred to for many years as the Forest Street Community Gardens. We feel that it is important for them to have their own identity. The people that work the gardens do a lot of good for the community and should be recognized as such. If their name is not part of the official public record, I would implore them to go through the same naming process the city has required of us. Our only intention is to coincide peacefully. It is our hope that we are creating a space where two groups can work together and create shared programs that benefit everyone in the community. The next thing I would like to address is communication. From the beginning of this project, our president, Mark Beckfield, has been in regular contact with the Riverfront Neighborhood Association, represented by Tammy Schrauf Nagel. We have provided updates and have been open to any suggestions and comments. We have been listening, and we have been responsive. One example, when a request was made for easier access to the gardens from the street, we worked with the city to change the plans and put in open access from Forest Street, a swing gate that goes across the trail, as well as a parking lot for the pavilion. We feel that this system of communicating with Tammy on behalf of the neighbors and gardeners is the most efficient and professional way of getting the correct information out to the right people. We have also held more than 11 public meetings where concerns and questions could have been answered. In response to the name itself, Veterans Tribute Park, there is a question about whether our project is a trail or a park. When first approached by the city with the option of using the Forest Street green space, we were shown a drawing of an intended trail connection that the city had drawn up. However, they did not have it on the budget and asked if we would be interested in taking on that expense as part of our project. It was not our initial intention to construct a trail, but rather a large gathering space where flag ceremonies and veteran events could take place. But the use of the land was a positive, and we agreed to take on the trail construction. Upon more meetings with the city, we were also asked to add the construction of the shared sitting parking lot, as well as a restroom. These requests, in combination with our gathering space, benches, trees, lights, security cameras, and a water feature at a cost of $2.2 million, definitely qualify the project as a park that happens to contain a trail. We were under contract with the city to meet all requirements and prove that we were a viable project before we were allowed to apply for naming rights. The naming request was not done in the 11th hour or to blindside any parties. We were just following the process laid out for us. As a foundation, we have followed the city's planning process to the letter and qualified for naming rights in March of 2019. In the May public opinion poll administered by the city, we garnered 87% support for our purpose name, but there are still questions about moving forward with that name. It was stated in the last meeting that the name isn't considered a rush, and we should take our time. We feel differently, as it is potentially affecting us financially. Our donors are being put on edge by unnecessary controversy, and we have had to do a fair amount of damage control. I would like to respectfully ask the City Council to please consider the information I have presented tonight and make an informed and fair decision during your vote. All of us at the foundation thank you for your time and consideration.
Does council have any questions? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you, and thank you for being here. I want to ask you a question as a representative of the veterans' group.
Okay.
If this were to fail tomorrow, are the, is the veterans' group willing and prepared to talk with other groups and kind of talk more about a compromise? I know that it sounds like the veterans' group and other groups have worked really well in the past, and so do you think that that's possible to do if this were to fail tomorrow?
I would like to think so. We do have a lot of expectations from a lot of different parties in the community. And we were doing this project specifically on the request of our veterans' organizations. So we have a very big responsibility to them as well. And I would like to say that's our first priority, but of course, we want to work with the community and come to a positive result.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sorry, Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you so much. I'm trying to say your last name correctly, Ms. Deutschlander.
Deutschlander, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. You shared something that I want to see if I'm understanding it correctly. If I understood you correctly, your comments were around developing the land north and east spaces of the park. Does this red quasi-rectangular box match what you're requesting?
No. This is actually a map of the entire space. We are only utilizing the north area up here, and then this area here that does not include the gardens. So, no, we're not using the entire space. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Thank you, Ms. Deutschlander, for all of your work on this project over many years. I just wanted to clarify something that you had said earlier as well, that Councilmember Emanuel brought up, because in our packet, and it's been my understanding, in our city council packet, it says that the name is a change of name for the entire Forest Street Special Area. That's how I've understood it, and that's how it's been published. And as you know, that's a 15-acre or maybe even a little larger parcel of land that includes the Forest Street Gardens, as well as the pavilion that's pictured there. So I guess I'm confused as well about the name request, because my impression has been that it's the entire Forest Street Special Area that is being requested for a rename.
We have been going on the assumption that we were naming the area that we were developing, as we were told that we couldn't encroach on the gardener's space. And we want them to feel like they are included in the space and that they can keep continuing the work that they do there.
Okay. I might follow up and see clarification from city staff on that, but I have a second question, and that's regarding the naming rights. When the county became one of the donors to this project, Eau Claire County, they specifically, along with their donation, requested language that would name the Honor Mall, the Eau Claire County Honor Mall, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Has there been, your other donors, have they brought that expectation to the table with dollars that they've donated? You know, knowing full well that this is a public space and that there's a public process that occurs to rename it, have they brought that? And I ask that because it seems to me that if this was such an important piece of this project, that that expectation would have been written into our own MOU as, at the, sort of toward the beginning of this project.
We have not been asked by any specific donors for specific naming after their donation.
Okay. Thank you. And if I, could I ask clarification from city staff about specifically whether this rename is for the entire Forest Street Special Area?
Mr. Pipinger?
Thank you, as well, for your answers.
Thank you.
I heard your question.
Sure. Thanks for answering it.
It was, it was our assumption that's what they were asking for, but if the change is just to include the areas of the trail and to the west of the trail to Forest Street, that would change the request from what we had presented.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Beaton?
Just want to make sure we're really clear. So we're talking about the renaming of everything within that red line.
That's what I was presenting. But if the understanding now is that they're looking at just including the trail, which would be, not include the areas where the gardens would, that then it would include the trail down to the point of where it meets up with our existing trail for going into Phoenix Park, and then this green area to Forest Street.
Sounds like there's been some miscommunication.
Any other questions for Mr. Pipinger? I'm sorry, Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I'm just reading a little body language and wondering if our city attorney or city manager might be able to render an opinion about what is the implication here if there indeed is a misunderstanding? How do we, how do we clarify this so that perhaps the rest of the public hearing is clarified of kind of what are we here to talk about? And then if there were to be a change, how do we make sure that all parties are clear on what a change is if indeed we have had a misunderstanding?
Council City Attorney Nick?
Yeah, I'll give it a try. I don't know if there's necessarily been a misunderstanding, but you have a current area that, you know, the Forest Street Special Area, green space. So that's the entire space. So if there's a renaming request that doesn't clearly delineate something else, you know, that's our nomenclature for this entire space. You know, is it possible to divide it into two separate spaces? Possibly, and you could decide that legislatively tomorrow. But, you know, it sounds like, you know, the group is saying that, that's applied, the Veterans Tribute Trail Group, that it would be satisfied or that it would be okay naming a portion of this green space, Veterans Tribute Park, something you could consider tomorrow legislatively. But otherwise, you know, currently, your name is for the entire space, and it's called the Forest Street Special Area, and an application has been made and is in front of you to rename the entirety of it. You could choose to rename a portion of it or none of it tomorrow at your legislative discretion.
Any other questions for Mr. Pipinger or for City Attorney Nick? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening.
Ronald Perry.
Get your address, too?
Pardon?
And your address, too?
E186032 Bues Road, Augusta, Wisconsin.
Go ahead.
Okay. I got involved with the Eau Claire County Veterans Tribute Council in 2016, which is quite a while ago. And when I attended the meetings, the meetings were, to me, appeared to be open to the public. And since the beginning of the, my involvement with it was always called the Eau Claire County Veterans Tribute Council. There was ample time for people to come up, if they wanted to have another name for it, is that they could come in and give public inputs at these meetings. They could speak. So if they had a difference of opinion, so on and so forth, and how things should go, then they had input. They could have input. Now, the people that I know that worked on that council, they busted their buns, believe me. I'm trying to get this thing to come about. And that little gal right there is one of them that really did a lot of work, okay? And there's other people I'm looking around through here where they put a lot of effort and a lot of work and a lot of time into it. Now, all of a sudden, somebody wants to throw an albatross into works, okay? And from the time of conception that I've been around it and known about it, it's been called the Eau Claire County Veterans Tribute Park or Trail, okay? Later, it was changed to the Trail. And that's what we were expecting. And when we went out doing fundraisings, they said, "Who are you raising funds for?" We're raising funds for the Eau Claire County Veterans Tribute, okay? Now, now comes along Johnny and saying, "Okay, we wanted to have this other name." Where's the work they put into it? Where's the effort that they applied? Where's the donations that they worked on putting into it, okay? What have they done to bring this tribute or veteran tribute about? Now, all of a sudden, they want to have naming rights, or whoever it was has asked for the naming rights of it. When for the last three years, it's been the same name, pretty much, until all of a sudden, we got the money together, we're ready to break dirt, break ground, and now somebody's throwing in, "Oh, we should be able to name it this," or "We should be able to name it that," okay? I've heard different names that they wanted for it, like the Forest Garden Park or something like this. And this has nothing to do with their garden space. They're going to keep their garden space. This is a veterans' tribute. This identify all those who have served in the military, to give them recognition and honor for the Eau Claire, the Eau Claire County, as I said, Eau Claire County Veterans Council. So this is what it was about. It's not about whether somebody's garden spot, is, are we going to recognize our veterans, or are we going to just turn our backs on them, forget about them? Now, I understand we're supposed to come up with legacy stones that can go into this park. I've heard that mentioned. And anybody who has heartfelt feeling about a certain person that they could purchase a legacy stone to be put into this tribute park area and be recognized. So I can't see where there's a trouble, where is the problem when you have one group that worked their rear ends off to get this thing to come about and to raise the funds for it, and then turn around and at the last minute, an albatross gets thrown in there and want to change the name? gets thrown in there and want to change the name. That's my opinion of it. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Perry? Thanks for coming out. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rory Shutey. I live at 406 Twin Oaks Drive, Altoona. I'm in, I'm a veteran, and I think we need to have this park in the Eau Claire area, our county, because we have youth at the age of four, or I mean, at six years old, and they go through high, middle school, elementary, high school, always whatever, and they don't know anything about our country from the start to the present. Their textbooks don't tell it. So that's why we need all of these, that's why we need a naming of Forest Street, or excuse me, the Veterans Tribute Park to honor all our veterans who have served in the country and are in the area and to our present soldiers who are, go overseas or serving, that are reserved or what have you. We need to remember, these guys are fighting for their lives that live in our, are from our area. So I feel this veterans park will be worthwhile, and I believe we could have the people that come to the Eau Claire area from out of town, state, what have you, if they look on the register and find out what we have in Eau Claire, for them to see, this would be the best thing for it, because we got history right here, our veterans. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shutey. Does anyone have any questions? Thanks for coming out. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael Hanke. I reside at 316 Division Street, Triple Falls, Wisconsin. I'm also the Ambit Department Commander for the State of Wisconsin. I've been asked by a number of their members to come here and address everyone here, to include veterans that are obviously all around us. I'm actually a member of the Eau Claire community through, through Ambit's post 654 from Eau Claire. And it's quite ironic that we're, we're debating the naming rights of which is a memorial area. It wasn't that many years ago that I recall serving in Iraq where Staff Sergeant Olson and Specialist Charles Kaufman from Eau Claire County were killed. I think it would be an extreme shame upon this community not to recognize that. A good friend of mine, Gold Star Mom, is in this audience today. We need to think about that. We need to think about what is this park not going to do just for, for community members? What is it going to do for healing? We're in a state where we're looking at 22 veteran suicides a day. I know a number of Vietnam veterans that have told me that once they witnessed the memorial in Washington DC, it changed their lives for the better. We need to consider what is this park going to do? Is that feeling going to get the same if we totally disregard of putting a veteran name on it? Total, total ignorance, not, not to recognize that. We take a look at, at the history of Eau Claire, Wisconsin, we can go back to the Eighth of Wisconsin with Old Abe. You have, your high school is named after the War Eagle. To this day, the 101st Green Eagles carry that patch. That's Old Abe from Eau Claire. There's a direct connection. Last month, we celebrated the 75th anniversary of Normandy. How many thousands and thousands of US troops jumped into a battlefield of destruction, had their bodies destroyed, their families destroyed, and we're not going to recognize this as a veterans park? In the very near future, the Wisconsin troops from this area are going to Afghanistan. What type of message are we sending those troops? What type of message are we sending their families? Thank you. I yield the floor, sir.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hanke? Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Janet Fraze, and I live at 2516 East Princeton Avenue in Eau Claire. Tonight, I'm speaking for the Community Coalition for Nonviolence. Yes, our veterans have fought to protect our freedom, but ultimately, they fight for peace. Peace is necessary at a community level as well as within our world. I am concerned about the misunderstanding, the lack of respect, and especially anger that was expressed at the Waterways and Parks Commission meeting. Periods of peace allow us to use our time, our talents, and our wealth to work towards taking care of each other and our earth home. Because the current Forest Street Park will be a city park, we need to consider all uses that the park will provide. The proposed tribute trail is intended for walkers to access veteran stories and learn about history. That's a wonderful part of this park, is that it does teach history, and it tells the stories of the Eau Claire County veterans who, who have served. There are also 11 wars represented along that trail. So when you see the, the white line that goes along the community gardens, starts south just about, I think right after the XL Energy Facility there, and it runs all the way north. I watched the video on the Eau Claire Veterans Foundation website. So there are 11 wars along that, including right along the community gardens, right, right adjacent to that. So I think our group is really interested in having, including a, a tribute for peace, specifically a sculpture that would be designed by a local artisan. And I've been communicating with Mark Beckfield, spokesman for the foundation, and, and he's been very agreeable to that, but I think it's something that really needs to be included in the park design so that we can be sure that we have that. So the coalition would like to see a specific area of this park that's designated for a tribute to peace in the park, a place to educate also about peace and to celebrate peace. We can count the number of signatures on a petition or line up on sides to choose a name for the park, or we can come together to choose a name that is inclusive of all users. I'm speaking for myself. My husband, who's a veteran, and I went to the, one of the big public open houses at the city shops and saw the PowerPoint. That was before, that was, I think, after the county board meeting. After that, we went to the city council, and the city council did pass, accepted the park with a tribute to peace. And I know that the veterans have a bell tower that they want to use for their ceremonies. It's in the gathering circle part of this park. And that's not quite a tribute to peace. I think we need something in addition to that. And we're not against naming the park, we're not against honoring and, and having a tribute to veterans at all, but we would like to see some, some inclusion of educating about peace and peaceful behaviors, as well as the 11 wars that are represented in this park. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Fraze? I don't see any. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Council folks, I'm Tammy Schrafnagle, 529 Hobart Street, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I'm also District 26 representative, which includes Phoenix Park and a lot of Birch Street. The fellow who's speaking after me is one of my constituents, as well as Dino Emerson. I have been working with Mark Beckfield and several of the veterans for three years as we've been bringing this process forward. I'm in favor of the park, I'm in favor of the trail, and my understanding all along has been that it is the Veterans Tribute Trail at Forest Street Park. And any thoughts on where Forest Street Park come from? If we look at the MOU for the gardeners, the MOU is defined as Forest Street Park. And we signed that since 2012 to, I think, when it expires in 2021. Anyhow, I am in favor of all of our organizations working together to come up with some idea that will celebrate veterans, celebrate citizens, and have our area of the community something that is a destination for all. I can't say anything more. I have been in favor of the trail project, and I want to see us work together to come up with a name that is inclusive of all of our endeavors. And that could include other things down the road that might come in. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Schrafnagle?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming out.
Good evening.
Dan Ziegler, 1026 East Madison Street. I'm going to take and remove my cap so some of you don't feel intimidated, bullied, or threatened by, by the word veteran. I believe there's a reason that Eau Claire does not have a veterans tribute after all these years, and that it doesn't want one. Even though 87% supports this development, it's the 8% that the politicians are catering to. Even though, as the foundation has jumped through all the specified city hoops to accomplish this, we have special interest groups out here that are coming out of the woodwork to try to dictate the design and the content of this project, derail this project, and create a them against us atmosphere. We don't know what the future holds. Maybe I'll have to go to Durand, or Blumer, or Nielsville, or any other municipality to visit a proper tribute, because Eau Claire will still not have one. We'll see. I do ask my fellow comrades here tonight to respect the meeting process of this evening and put your faith and trust in the Tribute Foundation's decisions on this matter. And now, I'll put my cap back on, because I've earned the right to wear the word veteran with honor.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks for coming out. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robert Andrew Skavich. I live at 1429 Drummond Street in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I just want to agree with the gentleman that just spoke. We need to work together. We're here together, we're here today to work together. And I'm one of the shared gardener members, and never in my whole entire time in Eau Claire have I seen this community divided. But I came here to say one thing, that the confusion that has been propagated by the media and by some of the statements people have made have created a situation, we, we need to look at old business first. So getting back to this, the park naming timeline, we've never, ever approved or officially in any way has seen in government documents ever the name Tribute Park. That is just plain fact. I'm pretty sure that is plain fact. At least, we should know that. And what I understand from this is that, from my indirect knowledge of the foundation's marketing work, the name Veterans Tribute Park was used in fundraising prior to the name being approved, which is unheard of. You don't put marketing material together that says this is the name of the park when it hasn't been approved. It's false information. And that's the confusion that's creating this divide in our community. So, and that's really significant, and my feeling is that, and I say this because Mark Beckfield made a statement to the commission, as well as hearing this from others in the community, other veterans, other people that I know, that the marketing material names the park, the Tribute Park. We can go back to the statements Mark has made, saying he didn't know whether or not there was any public document that stated the name or not, but he has seen it or heard it in paperwork that he's distributed. If you go back to the community's television program on that, you can hear him say that. So I don't think I'm lying about this. And the preeminent naming and use was not authorized nor condoned by any government organization, official or representative. However, the Veterans Foundation, under Mark Beckfield's, under his approval, claims he did everything by the book. But I can state now that I don't think he did by the book. If he's naming and marketing documents that most people on, in city government has never seen, but he's telling the donors, hey, give us money because we have this park and with this name, that's ridiculous. And that creates a lot of suspicion and confusion with the other people that say, we never heard that. So I want to move forward. So the families and the funders were under the, the false impression when given the name, and I, I think that's a bad thing. Only Mark Beckfield can state that, or the woman that spoke here earlier can tell us, you know, more clearly what has happened in the past. It should be clear to everyone, either for or against the naming, that all the reports in our newspapers are not really true. I think there's a lot of false information there. It's documented only since March of 2019 that they asked for that name, Veterans Tribute Park. And fundraising started well before then, and I don't know when it started, but we know, we keep on hearing that there's money that's been coming in, obviously under the wrong name, which is a problem. I mean, to me, that's false information. It's almost fraud in my, in my mind, because you, you take a name and you say, I'm going to give money to that name, and now it's no longer that name. So I also feel like this, all these marketing materials has caused this immense confusion, aggression, and distrust in our community. And this is significant, again, tonight, because we're fighting in our odds with each other because of this information, or misinformation. And it's not because any one of us likes or dislikes veterans. I can tell you right now, I will stand up for any veteran that comes to me and asks me for help. So I think the steps taken to subvert the no-naming process has caused this unfortunate mess. And so, I'm sorry, I'm getting confused here, what we're aiming. But anyway, I just want to say that I think we can work together as a community to make sure that everyone's needs get met. And I think, you know, part of the, the talk about whether or not a restructuring of that diagram makes sense. Well, to me, it makes sense at this point. And if it just means a voting tomorrow saying, we're going to outline this memorandum of MOU, whatever it's called, to designate a different location of that park-designated name, then we have a solution for all of us. I think tonight, we can all go, go home happy, saying that, you know, we're, we kind of worked it out. But I just want to let the veterans know, none of us here hate you or want to see you dismissed. We want to celebrate you and make sure you have every part.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you for coming out. Sir, can I have you just call this? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. I have a, perhaps a request or a suggestion that we could try to keep remarks about the idea of the name. It seems that there's been one, both sides so far have, it seems to me like it's crossing over to the, perhaps publicly attacking a person, and we're here to discuss an idea. And I think it's better for our community if we can keep the comments to the idea, and please keep personal commentary about members of the public, out of the public comments for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Emanuel.
I would agree. I think we started off this discussion with the idea that we were going to talk about what is it that you support or don't support in regards to the naming of this park, and we really need to make sure that we're focused on that, and why this is important to you. And those are the things that we need to hear. But again, you know, whether it's to council or to individuals here that are coming to speak, or that have been a part of this process, I think that there needs to be some safeguards there for them as well. And so I ask that we really are respectful and courteous to everyone that is speaking in here, attending in this meeting. And I appreciate Councilmember Emanuel's comments in that regard. Councilmember Worthman, did you?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. President Weld, if I could just ask the speakers, if they make their way back, to make their way back the same way they came in. Thank you.
And again, when you do finish, if you would exit the podium the same way you came in, just to make it easier for us to keep track of everything. So, Mr. Berry.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Weld. My name is Dennis Berry. I live at 1829 Stotts Avenue. I support the park as it's proposed. I agree with the previous gentleman. Been following city politics for a long time. I have never seen an issue that has been as confusing and disruptive and divisive as this one. And I think both sides are probably guilty misinformation. It's just, it seems like no one really has sat down and tried to work this out. If you're inclined to vote against this tomorrow, I urge that possibly you table it, postpone it. I haven't heard anyone say tonight that this naming of this street, park, trail is imperative to groundbreaking next month. I think the veterans in Eau Claire, in Eau Claire County, the state of Wisconsin, for that matter, deserves this council's unanimous support, like they received the last time this was up before you. It's just frustrating. This is such a good thing, and it's going to be such a good thing for the community that we need to start being for things more than we are against things. And I'm probably one of the most guilty parties in that endeavor. And I would hope that the council listens to everybody tonight, both sides, and is able to support this, if not tomorrow, you know, at a later date. And I thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Thank you, President Weld, for allowing us to come and speak. I have a few questions and points that I have found in a...
Just give us your name and your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Kyle Woodman. I live at 6336 Prairie Park Drive, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, 54701. And I have a few questions for everyone to ponder. It is my understanding that much of the $2.2 million raised by the Veterans Foundation is going to be used for the electricity, the bathrooms, the parking lot, and the trail. And I'm not accusing anyone of anything. I know all of you on the council. So I'm just telling you what it looks like from my perspective and many other folks that I'm in contact with. As far as I know, there was no plans to do anything with the park until the veterans came along with $2 million. Then all of a sudden, it was, "Oh, let's put in a trail. Let's put in some bathrooms. Let's put in a parking lot and everything else." So is it possible that the city is using the veterans to secure funding, to improve a space that will become part of the revitalized area of downtown, just because they know people will donate the money? I don't know, but it has that appearance. Next, I found that through reading the memorandum, that you're requiring the veterans to maintain $50,000 in an account for the city to use for ongoing maintenance of the park. So from my understanding is, if you take money out of this fund to maintain the park, I'm assuming the next year, they're going to have to make sure that's at $50,000. So maybe that's something that we can clarify. How much extra will that be after five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road? With that condition in place, it is likely that the Veterans Foundation will be spending much more on this project than $2 million. I would like clarification.
If we're going to have both parties, please take a pause. And I'll ask you to pause for one moment. Councilmember Worthman, did you?
Thank you, Councilmember. If I could just request the speaker to bring comments back to the name itself, because the memorandum of understanding was already something that we have voted on and approved at a prior meeting. If I could just ask the speaker to bring the comments to the actual name.
And again, I would repeat the same thing, too. Let's try and focus on the item at hand, which is...
Well, I think this pertains to everything.
In regards to the naming, though, is really whether you're in favor and why or not.
Well, it just appears that the foundation has been laid, and it all leads to now we're not naming the park, what the veterans want to name the park. It started out, they wanted to make a park, and now it's, they're building a park for the city, is what it looks like to me, and maintaining it. That's what it looks like. So furthermore, paragraph six of the memorandum says, "The project shall be wholly owned and anew to the benefit of the city. As such, the city shall have the right to alter, repair, relocate, replace, and remove the project as it deems necessary in its sole discretion." So who's to say that whatever the veterans build at this site that is not yet named, of course, won't be removed in the next few years, just like the monuments all across our country that are being removed to highlight our founding fathers or Confederate soldiers? It has already happened in Madison. Will it happen here next? So for as much as the veterans have done for the country and for this project, it does not appear that they're getting a fair deal, to me, and a few other folks. Them simply asking to name the park as they wish, after agreeing to do all these other things, has divided our community. It's clear that the city loves the money that the veterans have brought to the table for this park. But do they love the veterans? I don't know. It doesn't look like it to me. There are other municipalities in this county who would welcome the generosity and their proposed name for the park without any of all this nonsense. That's about all I have to say. So thank you. And if there's any clarification on anything that I've said, that would be great.
Any questions for Mr. Weld? Thanks for coming up.
Brian Jensen, W2781, County Road HH, Leva, Wisconsin. I'd like to see a show of hands of all those who are POWs here. Nobody. I'd like to see a show of hands of all of those who are combat veterans here, actually saw combat. I'd like to see a show of hands of all of those, keep your hands up, please. I'd like to see a show of hands of all of those who are disabled while in the military. It's real simple. Have these people name the park. Thank you. Any questions?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is David Backstrom. I live at 210 East Polk. I've been living in the city and county of Eau Claire all my life. I'm a Vietnam vet, serving with the Navy and the Marine Corps in Vietnam and the Da Nang area. A lot of Da Nang area people out there. Na Jong, to you, John. The most important part of this park is it has a real emphasis on the veterans and their families, and the families of families. I have been a small portion of the high ground for the last 30 years. Raised in the last six years, finally, a year ago, we've got a beautiful bronze soldier and hero dog that's placed in a plaza area. That money was raised from all over Wisconsin, all over the United States. But there's a big piece of it that came out of Clark County, Eau Claire County Chippewa, because they really identified with this hero soldier and military dog, because the dogs are very important, and the hero soldiers went into combat before anyone else. With that said, the reason I bring that to your attention is for 30 years since the founding of the high ground, this isn't a, what you call, war monument kind of place. It's a healing ground, an educational facility. We have a variety of school buses that are coming and going out of this area, out of our schools, elementary school usually, specifically four, five, sixth grades, that come there, and then we spend plenty of time touring and identifying with these nine, 10, 11-year-olds, and the teachers who are very surprised at the education they received and the time they're up there. With that said, again, I really believe that, as proactive is the county of Eau Claire, the city of Eau Claire, and the state of Wisconsin here, that we are way behind having that type of park here in Eau Claire. I love going to the high ground. I have been going there for 30 years, and I've also went to the beautiful parks they have in Arcadia. But shouldn't we be ahead? Shouldn't we be ahead of those smaller communities? Of course, Ashley's placed a lot of money appropriations in Arcadia, and that was big pieces of money. But I think as this thing rolls along, the Veterans Tribute Park, there should be no doubt what this is for. It's for the veterans and their family, and a healing process, and for people to come and go all the time, just as any of the other parks. So I'm so proactive to seeing this tribute put in place, that I'm very excited about it. And there's always back and forth on any issues. So those are my comments. And I've been an employee for the city and state of Wisconsin all my life. I'm retired now. So I've been able to spend a lot of money developing a committee on the high ground and raise thousands upon thousands of dollars to have this done, and I've raised a dime in my life before. But what a beautiful bronze, beautiful plaza that's up there overlooking thousands of acres in Clark County. And I think the city of Eau Claire, we can do even a better job. It's in our soul.
Thank you, Mr. Backstrom.
Good evening. Good evening, sir. My name's Lee Henick. I live at 3150 Runway Avenue. I'm an Army veteran. I'm also a veteran. I've served in the government as a Department of Army civilian for one of our intelligence services, and a Department of the Army civilian for one of our government agencies, and for earlier, one of our intelligence services. I was called after 9/11 to ask if I'd come over and help. I was on the investigating team at Abu Dhabi after the hiccup we had. This seems, this issue seems to be about two issues. One's a process issue, which I'd like to talk about first. It appears to me that our process, that the veterans went through, jumped through many hoops, and followed the process to the T, including the 60-day comment period, and the issue was closed when some Johnny-com-late ladies came in and disrupted a lot of things. We followed the process. I'm a president of one of the neighborhood associations, and when I failed to follow the process, the city said, clamped down on me and said, "No, you don't have a voice. You can't say anything." So we either have it one way or the other. We either have a process, and when we follow through on it and get it done, then we should accept that process that we've used. Or we have a process where we can have a couple people intervene at the last minute after the process is closed and disrupt things. You guys decide. You can't have it both ways. But I think the real story is about the sacrifice. One of our UW Green Bay professors retired, Gloria Hockstein, told me about 7% that military veterans comprise 7% of the working population. If you factor in the entire population, they're less than 7%. And they've carried the load for this country for 90-some percent, at least 93%. They've sacrificed in small ways and big ways. They get deployed to, National Guard gets called up and gets deployed to hurricanes and tornadoes and Siren a couple years ago, and this year, Puerto Rico, Florida, and Houston. They left their homes. They sacrificed their time and energy and did their job without a question about, "Well, maybe I don't want to go," or anything like that. They did their job. My first terror, my first difficult situation was in the '70s, Nixon called a DEFCON 3 alert, which the Russians were threatening to go into and intervene in the Israeli, Saudi, Israeli-Arab war. We were looking at invading Saudi Arabia. If no one knows about that, that was a really testy time, and the Russians were going to go in. So I was deployed, I was in Germany at the time, and I was deployed to Bad Hersfeld. Our company commander gave us all sheets of paper and said, "Write a letter home. Tell your mom, why you say your son's goodbye." And then he went on this rah-rah situation about how we're expected to hold the Russians for 28 minutes. 28 minutes. We're going to live for 28 minutes. For a young guy, that was pretty daunting, to write your letter home to mom saying goodbye, and knowing you have 28 minutes to live after the Russian, after the war starts. We really thought we were going to war. Fortunately, we didn't. I'm still here. Later on in life, I got into it real good in Afghanistan. I was outside the wire over 100 times. I was shot at via different ways 26 times. One of which was, and I got into an IED, and I had a good concussion. One of the soldiers were hit, and I was able to somehow muster the strength and the courage to go out, grab him, and pull him back behind the vehicle. I don't know how I did it. At age 60, I did that. This is about honoring our veterans, honoring their service. Our people left their blood on the ground. A good friend of mine, a Navy analyst, died in Iraq a couple of months ago. She's buried in Arlington. She has a mom. She's in her 30s, one of the best analysts I ever met. She gave her life to serve this country. And the simple thought of people not thinking that that's important hurts my soul. We have a duty and an honor and an obligation to reach out to our vets and say, "Come on home. It's time that we let you rest in peace, without distractions, without any kind of disruptions." I grieve for all the disruptions that we've had, but we have a dead honor to let our vets rest in peace. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
I'm kind of surprised there hasn't been any questions. There's like been 10 people up already.
Thanks for coming up.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gary Culver. I live at 816 East Lexington Boulevard, and I'm the current commander of post 305 in Eau Claire. I'm a veteran of the Vietnam conflict. My father served in France in World War II, and my grandfather-in-law served in France in World War I. As opposed to members of the larger state and national veterans of foreign wars, we have a mission to serve our military veterans and the communities around us, including the poor and the needy. Part of our vision, ensure that veterans are respected for their service and are recognized for the sacrifices they made and their loved ones made on their behalf. The Veterans Tribute Park will honor the 374 local veterans that gave... The Veterans Tribute Park will honor the 374 local veterans that gave their lives in service to keep this country free. And the park will pay tribute to all veterans who have fought for the freedoms that we enjoy today. It will showcase the military men and women, women's history of our country in wartime from the Civil War till today. The name of the park is everything that honors and distinguishes the purpose of this park. It is very special and meaningful to the freedoms that we and generations before us and after us will keep. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Culver, any questions for Mr. Culver? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Mr. President, counsel. My name is Burl Middleton. The counsel. My name is Burl Middleton. I live at 3002 White Oak Lane, Eau Claire. I'm here today to support the park and to support the trail. And there's a reason. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the reason why I'm going to support that. But I also represent a group of Veterans for Unity, because I think that that's really what we need at this point in time. The residents of many local community enclaves have made an emphasis to remind us, the rest of the communities, of the pride that they have for their place in the city. These are not desultory community neighborhoods. They have plans. They serve purposes. They take part in their community progress, whether it's to develop a neighborhood watch program, a neighborhood association, community-oriented policing services, eliminating truck hazards, blocking roundabouts, or any number of other prideful activities that enhances the safety and beauty of their neighborhoods, and thus making our entire communities proud. Now, here are some of those communities. Plank Street Hill. Anybody have heard of it? Plank Street Hill, community. The Bloody Ninth. Know where it is? Bloody Ninth, Ninth Ward. Shawtown. Any Shawtowners in here? Four Corners. Are you represented? How about the Hill? That's starting at Menominee Street going up west. The East Hill. How about the Point? It's Phoenix Park. And of course, you heard today from the Third Ward. Now, the Forest Street residents are no less proud and deserve no less recognition for their rich community, and those surrounding neighborhoods as well, because they've cultivated and maintained oftentimes without any resources whatsoever by the sheer strength of their That's what military veterans do. That's why we fight. Yet this neighborhood has had to be very vocal, lest they lose many of their accomplishments and their contributions. Now, I have a little bit of a connection to this neighborhood, because when I was elected in 2000, that was in my district. I was also serving in the military. So I have a little bit of a, have a little bit of a conflict in terms of, you know, who to support, what to support, how to support it. So what I believe in is that it has to be something that is going to be more eclectic. It's going to be a combination. It's not one or the other. It can't be one or the other. And needn't I remind anybody here, if you do not know who Bernie Triton is, anybody know who Bernie Triton is? Yeah. We wouldn't be sitting here or standing here talking about this if Bernie was here. Bernie was the first North River France Neighborhood Association president. He took care of business. This issue would have been decided. I do have some comments. The Eau Claire Veterans Foundation is made up of veterans and supporters who represent a very bright group in the city, and I commend you for the work that you're doing and the work that you've done. It's excellent. You've come forward to open our eyes to the fact that Eau Claire belonged to a very exclusive club, and that it excluded a permanent public veteran recognition. Except for former Senator Dave Zine, who is in the audience, who put together Traveling Veterans Tribute a number of years ago, there's not been a permanent public service place where veterans as a group could be recognized by the public during a holiday or a ceremonial proclamation. But more importantly, and more importantly, where each veteran could be recognized individually during moments of respect at the whim of a family member or the general public. The Eau Claire Veterans Foundation is proposing to change that, and again, I commend you for that.
Mr. Middleton, if I could have you to wrap up as shortly as you can.
Then I'll just name the park. I think that it's something that has to be eclectic. I think that we have a conflict that really doesn't exist. You have a community that has been there, that has dedicated itself. I heard someone earlier say, "What have they done?" Again, community policing, neighborhood associations, keeping pride in their neighborhood, making the entire community of Eau Claire a better place, and that's what each of our communities does. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Councilmember Emmanuel. Mr. Middleton, if you have just one moment.
Thank you, President Wilden. Thank you, Mr. Middleton, and thank you for your leadership and your service. You have very distinguished service in the military, and I thank you for that very much. Counsel received a letter today with your name and several other folks who have served and/or are military civilians. If I can read just perhaps one sentence from the letter, I'd like to ask you a follow-up question, please.
You may.
Okay. This sentence is, "To this end, we are not weighing in regarding the name for the park or if a new name is needed. We are asking for an opportunity to bring all sides together toward a resolution everyone can support." I'm wondering if you can talk to counsel a little bit about what that would look like. I think that infers that postponement of action would need to occur if this were to happen, and wondering if it's too early to talk about what that process looks like. Knowing you, you probably have some ideas, and I'd like to learn a little more about what that may look like.
I think there are several ways. One of the first ways is purportedly what has already taken place, and that is that there's been contact with that neighborhood already, those individuals. That mechanism, apparently, either someone has amnesia, can't remember exactly how it worked, or something happened. So for us to have that contact, again, I think would be very, very relevant. The second way would be to appeal to the neighborhood association and to work through it that way. Again, that's involvement. You have an entire community. You can't have neighbors saying, "I didn't know that things were happening," when they belong to a neighborhood association.
Any other questions for Mr. Middleton? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Travis Moore. I live at 1112 Imperial Circle, apartment number one here in Eau Claire. I do apologize and thank you all for your patience. I actually was not expecting to speak this evening, and I'm also not a very good public speaker, so bear with me. I am a local veteran here with the AMVETS here, the Olsen Kaufman Post 654, along with Michael Hanke here, who had spoke with you earlier. I am all for having it be called the Veterans Tribute Park, and this is the reason why, and this is a personal reason for me. A few years ago, I actually was almost one of those 22 people that commit suicide every day. And with the help of Michael Hanke and a couple other individuals, Michael Ovskas, another really big one, he was, at one point, he was the commander here of our local AMVETS post. They helped me through some really tough times a couple of years ago, and I would not be here because of them. Another individual, you might not know his first name, but those of you that work here in the council will know the last name, Andrew Sterns. His father is in the local police here. He was also one of those individuals that really helped me still be here today and get up out of bed every morning. Long story short, I now have a two-year-old son who is the absolute world to me, and I love him to death. And I know when he gets older, he's going to want to know where or when I tell him how important he is to me. I'm going to end up mentioning Andrew Sterns as one of those individuals. And when I look at it and think about it, I grew up in the city of Kadot, which is 1,200 people, and just outside of the city limits, along Highway 27 there, and along Highway 29 is a Chippewa County Veterans Tribute with less than one acre of area, and it is just absolutely, all flags are flying, all ribbons are done. They've got everything there that little kids would like to see, tanks, helicopters, everything like that. I'm not advocating for any of that, but the fact that there isn't anything here in Eau Claire literally makes my heart tear. And with it being just a tribute park versus only a tribute trail, to me personally, it feels like all you're doing is just giving us the bare minimum and then pushing on and pushing forward. The fact that Eau Claire does not have one, I feel we should name it a park for two reasons. One, we would finally have something to recognize all the veterans that are here this evening. I noticed that there are very few of them that are my age. It's very understandable there with that. Two, let's make a statement as a city to have a veterans' park, because regardless of whether it is a trail or it is a park, with me being a veteran personally and others that I know, having their kids be able to play ball or have picnics and everything in a veterans' tribute park will mean so much more than just it being a Forest Street Park with a tribute trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions from counsel? Councilmember Emmanuel.
Thank you so much, and I'm really glad that you're here.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work you've done and a lot of courage, so thank you for being here in many ways, in all the ways. I'm wondering what, if you have any personal opinions, it sounds like you may speak on your behalf, so I understand it's not on behalf of all veterans by any means. What are your thoughts about creating the geographical, I guess, clarification on if it wasn't the whole rectangle, if it was the north and the east side called the Veterans Tribute Park?
Versus what the Veterans Organization was under the opinion of, are you saying, in reference to, versus what is drawn here versus previously what had been mentioned as far as it being just like the east side of it there, and the previous what had been mentioned with the other veterans' tribute group?
Yeah, I think, I don't want to speak on their behalf in the event I don't understand, you know, completely. I guess, to me, maybe I can ask it a different way. For you, do you feel like there's a value of having the entire rectangle named that, or if there is a dedicated space within this rectangle, a dedicated park called the Veterans Tribute Park that has all of the amenities that you're dreaming of and people are working really hard for? Does that feel like that's meaningful and that would give you a value?
As far as the limitations, as far as where the lines would be drawn there for that, I cannot make that decision. I only came here just to vote for there being a name of the actual park itself. As far as what that goes, I am not in the pay grade or hierarchy to know the actual ins and outs of that. But I do know that with us not having a park here in Eau Claire, you know, let's make a statement, and, you know, the old saying goes, "Go big or go home." So as far as that goes and ironing out where those boundary lines should be, that's all beyond me, but I definitely believe at the very least we deserve to have a name of the park, and not just for me or the veterans that are here, but also the ones that are not here. Because, you know, as a lot of people say, you know, what's in a name? But at the same time, nothing and everything is also in a name. And the fact that we don't have anything that permanently shows the city's gratitude towards veterans, now's the time to change that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So my name's Jared Sweater. I live at 3245 Neptune Avenue, North Side. What's up? Pardon my gym shorts and flip-flops. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I am, to answer your direct question, I'm in very much favor of the name for multiple reasons. I got four minutes to tell you about. Number one, I'm a combat veteran, served two tours overseas, like probably many other people in the room. I lost some of my very best friends also on the battlefield, and then I lost one of my very best friends after he came home because he had no support and was kicked to the curb like 22 other people a day. Apologize to get emotional, but he was literally my best friend, and we did everything together, and then he died because he just couldn't take being kicked to the curb anymore. So one fact, I am not foreign to being used as a political ploy. During my deployment to Afghanistan, we all got called in for a meeting. It was kind of weird, and we were told that, "Sorry, the government in the United States that you're fighting for is having an argument about government spending, and you're not going to get a paycheck this month, and you might not get a paycheck next month. That's all we know. I don't have time to hear your bitch about it. Grab your stuff because we've got a patrol tomorrow." Well, that patrol wasn't something simple. I was deployed to the Kunar Province of Afghanistan, which is in eastern Afghanistan. If any of you guys know where that's at, there was fighting there almost every day I was there. So that's one reason I'm for it. The second reason for it is because on top of being a combat vet, I'm a father of four wonderful children that mean everything to me, probably the only reason I'm still here. My wife will attest to that, and I need to tell them what I did, not because I'm a hero, because I'm not, but I served with a lot of friends that were heroes, and they're dead. And we got nothing in the city of Eau Claire to honor them, which is absolute bullshit. So pardon my French, but that's what it is. It's bullshit, and I'm tired of it. I'm tired of the bickering that goes on in this town, because as someone earlier said, the city of Eau Claire definitely wants their money. Right now, they're using the veterans of the county of Eau Claire to get their money, and they're kicking the veterans of Eau Claire to the curb. They're taking their money and saying, "Sorry, you were just used as another political ploy. We don't care." That's the other reason. Lastly, I just think it would be really nice to upgrade the area, because I like to ride my bike in the city of Eau Claire. We go on family bike rides, and I would love to have that trail to go through. I think it would really improve the city, and I think we'd all agree, we have the funds. The veterans raised $2.2 million for the trail. Again, now we're fighting over a name? Just give it to them. Just let them have it. So with that, any questions? Have a good night.
Any questions for Mr. Sweater? Thanks for coming up. Mr. Lord, do you have?
Thank you, President Wilden. Well, let's say that if by tomorrow, if we make a decision by early mention, say that would not be the whole part, only half of the part, is that satisfy the veterans group?
It doesn't satisfy me, and I can't speak for the veterans' group. I wasn't in a lot of the process. I was approached by the park fundraiser a couple of years ago. I worked with someone that was in the fundraising group, and he told me about it. I was understanding that it would be the park. I'll be honest, I'm actually not satisfied with that because of, that's what the money was for, was the park. I think oftentimes veterans have to share everything. Like, why can't we just have our own memorial? What is the problem? So in my opinion, no, I would not be happy. I would like the entire park to be a veterans' park. I understand that may not be a popular opinion, but yeah, that's what I, that would be my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweater. Good evening.
Dave Zine.
Dave Zine, 1716 63rd Street, Eau Claire. Former state senator, one of the individuals of the original High Ground and American Motorcycle Tribute, Hallie Peace Park, the Area Historic Tribute in Fairchild, Wisconsin, the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Officers Tribute, a lot of these. By the way, tribute means for the living, memorial means for the dead. I first was, I was on a 15-day tour, and at the very moment, I was at paying respects and providing a display of which a number of veterans, their names are on that, where those seven Marines were killed from the Jarheads Motorcycle Club in New Hampshire last week. I was there providing a display. Some veterans got a hold of me and saying, how dare they want to take veterans? Well, they want to dilute, they want to change this name of this Veterans Tribute Trail in Eau Claire. These individuals were absolutely irate. They were mad. They were discouraged. They were, they were, they were just upset. And you should just know a little history of Eau Claire. Eau Claire, in honoring veterans, and I'm going to point to a certain individual here, 172 certificates were provided by members of the High Ground and the Wisconsin Veterans Tribute and the Lieutenant Governor and myself to the Mung. The first place, United States of America, that provided a stone monument that said, welcome Mung warriors to Wisconsin, welcome here, was at the Wisconsin Veterans Tribute in Kadat, the Citizen Soldier Monument, the first place, United States of America. And I understand the Veterans Tribute, the Eau Claire Veterans Tribute Trail has plans to honor the Mung, which they deserved. 50 years ago, this is the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. I got to share this. A couple corpsmen are here, Joe and Dave, my gosh, semper fi, semper fi everybody. 50 years ago, we did not know that we were running reconnaissance in Laos, reconnaissance patrols. Now, why I'm going to mention this, every veteran has a story to tell. Every veteran has a story to tell. This Veterans Tribute Trail has a story to tell. Now, there's a segment of people called Home Front Heroes, people that never served in the military. They're being honored. They are ever been as deserving to be honored and respected as veterans. Many veterans believe this. It was the farmers, the factory workers, the public servants, they stayed home, the homemakers, they stayed home. But veterans in harm's way, the sights, sounds, and stents of war can never be forgotten. But the Home Front Heroes deserve to be respected, and they deserve to be honored. And I would hope that this Veterans Tribute Trail does the same. 50 years ago, last Thursday, June 27, one of my absolute first patrols, I come over Little Ridge, and here's two NVA soldiers, yapping, and they had all their clothes off. They were bare naked. They had their ammunition, their bandoliers, and their AK-47, and their clothes on the rocks. Rather than kill them, I dropped back, told the squad leader, and he wanted to take the glory. He was going to waste them. Ah, we surround, we didn't know how many were there. We surrounded. Before I know it, we're shooting at each other. Friendly fire hurts. Post-traumatic stress disorder, survivor's guilt. This Veterans Tribute Park, we must keep it the same way as it is. That's what these veterans that called me when I'm at New Hampshire, honoring those Marines that were killed, possible intentional. Veterans Tribute Trail. Tribute honors the living, memorial the dead. I would hope, if there's any consensus, any medium ground, make sure you're right. Something else, individuals that never served in harm's way, veterans, you can order your military medical and personnel records of your ancestors back to the Civil War. You should know about your ancestors. You should know. 50% of the population in the United States of America, it is said, 50% of the population is either veterans or have veterans in their immediate family. One of every two, 50%. I would encourage you to order a standard Form 180, go to the county veterans' office, call the toll-free number, find out all the history of your ancestors. That's what we hope this Veterans Tribute Trail will do. Everybody has a cohesiveness and a camaraderie of veterans. Peace through strength. Veterans who serve this country, we should be honoring military. God bless each and every one of you, and I would hope that we keep Veterans Tribute Trail paramount and keep it as what was told me when I was in New Hampshire at the place where seven Marines were killed on a motorcycle. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Any questions for Mr. Zine?
Questions? Sure.
Councilmember Law?
Thank you, President Walde. Well, Mr. Zine, thank you so much for mentioning the Mung Veterans to, we appreciate that. And at the same time, miscommunications. I personally think that, having requests for the whole block of that, so tonight is clear information that it's not the whole block, only half of that. So we go home tonight, we'll get everything clear for tomorrow and make a decision. Thank you.
Let me be clear. No ands and buts, ifs and maybes. This is the Veterans Tribute Trail. Period. End of sentence.
Hello. My name is Scott Morfit. I live at 924 James Street, in a house I bought off of a VA loan. I moved to Eau Claire originally on the GI Bill. I'm a veteran of the Iraq War. While there, I was a strength manager and specifically did casualty notification, a few times notifying people of their soldier's deaths moments after our base had been mortared. So, and while I was back in stateside, I worked with the Minnesota National Guard on reintegration into, for soldiers re-entering the life. So the lives of veterans and how veterans are honored, both the fallen and the living, are just very deeply part of my heart. And so I am so thrilled that there is a Veterans Memorial coming to Eau Claire and a trail as well involved in that. I am part of, let's see, what are we calling ourselves? Veterans for Unity. And as I've been reflecting on this, I think that there's been a lot of miscommunication throughout this. The last part being the space I'll talk about first, but, or at the end. But the one big thing is, I think that there's been a lot of vitriol that people that would have a comment are somehow anti-veteran and against honoring veterans, and that seems so egregious. And when I see it in the press, in the Leader Telegram specifically, and when I see comments put out in WEAU and WQOW talking about people who are entering public comment are anti-veteran, that just seems odious and egregious to where we are. And so I think a lot of that miscommunication should be addressed. I think each and every one who called someone on the other side somehow anti, should really consider what they did there. The other big miscommunication is of the area of the trail itself, and I think that one of the other ones is that anyone was anti. I don't think I've heard in the county, in the parks and waterways, and in this, any one person say, no trail, no park, no veterans, no. Every single person has said that they are for this. So let's keep that in mind as we're reflecting on this. But I do see that there is some dissonance between the space that we're, that we're discussing what would be the Veterans Park versus what would be the Forest Street Park. So I think on this topic, I'm going to encourage the council, each member one of you, to consider tabling it while we can discuss what is actually being discussed, what is actually being voted and approved on, because I think that that is so nebulous at this point that no one knows. And I will say again, that all of the park and everything has been approved on, so I, if I don't see it starting, it's only one group that would pull it out at this point. So I really do hope that this starts, and I hope that this all happens. I just really do hope that we can have some time to actually discuss and work together and, you know, be a good society and all of that. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr.?
Oh, sorry, that's yours.
That's all right. Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Hello, councilman, president, everyone else. My name is Brian Pauley, 1013 East Grant Avenue, Eau Claire. I am a veteran of the Marine Corps, sever fidelity to all of my fellow brothers here. Not only am I a veteran of the Marine Corps, I have been a resident of Eau Claire for 13 years. I am also a member of the Community Street Garden, Forest Street Community Garden, okay? So I represent a couple of different worlds, and this is really hard for me to get up here and speak one way or the other, because my military service, I'm very proud of it. And I do believe that we need to have some sort of representation in this park here. I also know that those at the Forest Street Community Garden have been working their butts off the last 10 years to make this garden what it is, the community that it is. And that community is also very important to me, okay? I'm very proud of two different parts of my life here. I think, as a member of Veterans for Unity, we do need to continue this conversation a little bit. Whether we have like a two-park solution, or we come together and have maybe an eclectic name for it, but I do think more discussion needs to occur, okay? That's my two cents, short and sweet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming up. Any questions? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Mike Corgar. I live at 622 Elm Street in Chippewa Falls. I am the president of the Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter 5 in Eau Claire, and the American Legion Commander in Augusta, Wisconsin, amongst other positions in other veterans' groups. I'm here to support the naming of the park as Veterans Tribute Park. I think that it would do a disservice to water down the name. At the Water and Parks Commission hearing, the one name that threw up was, kind of scared me, it was the Forest Street Community Gardens and Veterans Tribute. I thought, who is going to remember that? The school groups that will be coming to see this tribute and to learn are not going there to see, I don't want to put down the gardeners, but the school groups that are going to be coming there are not going to be there to look at the gardens. They are not going to be coming there because it's Forest Street. It's because it's the Veterans Tribute Trail Park. And anything else would water it down and would be difficult for people to remember or to want to come to. So I think the, whether a part of it gets carved out of there, but I don't know how that would be, how that would be for a city, for the city to carry out. But I think the main theme should be Veterans Tribute Park, and that would honor all our veterans and keep the focus on what is being developed there.
Thank you, Mr. Corgar. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you for coming up. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks. Hi, Joe Maurer, 611 Fountain Street in Eau Claire. And I'm here to speak in favor of clarity and unity. I, first of all, want to say just a brief history. I've been involved in the gardens for approximately 10 years at Forest Street, and my involvement started with coming to Eau Claire after leaving New York City and witnessing a murder. And this has been a place of healing for me. And I just see, I just see some divide, and I see a lot of opportunities for unity. Just a little history of the background, background of the gardens. The Forest Street Community Gardens has had a mission to give back to the community and has donated something like nine tons of vegetables in total in its existence. And there are really, there are really four distinct parts that I could think of. There's the shared garden, which is in the southern part of the yellow section. There's the rental gardens, which serve about two dozen families. There is a UW Eau Claire Librarians Garden, which is for the McIntyre Library, and they donate all the vegetables to charity. And there is the garden, which is the herbal garden in the northern section. I've heard from the Veterans Foundation that they're not encroaching on us, but then I've also seen drawings that show red lines around us. And just so you know, I've never talked to any gardener who's anti-veteran, so we appreciate that. There's a lot of old women that work in the garden that are scared of you because you're warriors. And we are not, we are not, we are not, we are not veterans, and I respect that. I respect that. And I brought up, I brought up this point mainly because I think, I've made mistakes in communications along the way, and I'm looking at you, Mark, I know we're not supposed to name people, but I apologize to you. We are, the shared garden meets on Mondays and Wednesdays at 6:00 and Saturdays at 10:00. And we are trying to make ourselves available to you and trying to understand why there's a line being drawn around us and why we can't coexist is, it's confusing, because I've heard from a lot of people that we can, and then I've heard some others that the whole area should be called Veterans Tribute Park. But why? Because we are not veterans, and we haven't experienced what you have experienced, and we want to hear your stories. I think the idea, the fundamental idea that you conveyed today beautifully, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, I'm a little nervous, but the fundamental idea that this is telling real stories rather than general stories is beautiful. And I think we actually do that too, in person. People that come by the garden talk to us all the time, and the idea of a trail being along there is beautiful. So I would think that it would be an advantage to not include us as part of the veterans, but come up with a solution that's inclusive for the park. And also consider that this is 16 acres. There may be other groups that come here too, and it's a public space. Designing public spaces is complex, it's complicated, and it takes a lot of consideration of all the user groups. So I would vote for a no vote on naming the area, and with the consideration that we continue to work together to try to come up with something that works for all user groups. The last thing I'll say is, also, I would like this city to consider other processes. It was mentioned that the most popular Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC has millions of visitors, and that would be, I believe, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. There were 1,400 entries for the design. So I realize this has been a long process. I'm a designer too, and have been involved in this, but understand that it actually, you were the first group to come forward, and the city welcomed you with open arms. So there actually has been a lot of welcome here, and I hope you can see that. We welcome veterans to come down to the gardens, and we would love to be available to talk. And I know more people feel a little intimidated by this, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Bertrand, I live at 1551 East Madison Street, Eau Claire. I'm not a veteran. The man in front of me that spoke said that there's all the women that work at the garden who's scared of the warriors. I'm not a warrior. I'm a non-vet. But you know what? Every vet sitting in this audience and the past vets that this tribute, Tribute Park represents fought for my freedom and everyone else's freedom. The gardeners would not have the freedom to garden if it was not for the veterans. I myself am not a veteran, but I can name every one of my family members. And actually, outside of the courthouse is the only spot in the entire Eau Claire County that actually does list some of the veterans' names. I have two family members' names on there. One is Frederick Walter Bertrand Jr., and he's still missing in action to this day. I am the last one that may get the chance to bury him, if they could ever find him. This tribute is a place for everyone. This tribute is a place for everyone. The man in front of me said, "They're so scared of us, but yet they welcome the veterans." That's completely scared, but welcome. What is it? You're so scared of the veterans, but yet on the other hand, you want the veterans down there? It's backtalk. The Veterans Foundation should not have had to come up with $2.2 million. The city of Eau Claire and Eau Claire County should have had a Veterans Tribute years and years ago. You all should be ashamed of yourselves that it's never been built.
I'll allow her to continue. You need to give us one moment, please, all right? Councilmember Worthlin.
Thank you, Council President. I'm pointing to ordering the speaker for saying that members of the council should be ashamed of ourselves. I don't think that's in the spirit of this discussion, and I would ask that the speaker use different language or apologize.
Okay, sir. I will apologize to the council for wording it improperly. I'm nervous. As a member, I've been born and raised in Eau Claire. As a resident, I'm ashamed that Eau Claire has not built a tribute or a memorial for the veterans, not directly to the council, because not all of you have been sitting here for years. So I apologize that I directed it straightly and strictly at the council, the city of Eau Claire and Eau Claire County. Is that better? It shouldn't have had to come to a Veterans Foundation. I'm not a vet, but I spend a lot of time at the high grounds because I can sit there and I can cry and I can reflect and I can walk around and I can look at the men and women's names that fought for me and for the right for me to stand here today and talk. I'm not a vet, but I would give my life for one. I wasn't allowed to join the military because I was, had a medical condition or I would be. Every member of my family except me was a vet. My grandmother buried four sons. Gold Star Mother. One's still missing. I want a place to go so I can reflect. You know what? I will not purchase a legacy stone for any member of my family. Do you know why? Because I'm so afraid that if I buy it now, it's going to be placed in the Forest Street Special Area or the Forest Street Community Gardens. The name should be the Veterans Tribute Park. There is multiple parks throughout Eau Claire, and I'll name Dimler Park for one. There's a community garden inside of Dimler Park. Someone mentioned earlier Carson Park. You got the Paul Bunyan Camp. You got the Chippewa Valley Museum, all inside of Carson Park. If the Veteran Foundation came up with enough money, which was half of the value of that land, then in that entire red area, I believe, should be named Veteran Tribute Park and the community garden should be inside of it, as everything else is. All the other community gardens are inside of a park. They don't have their own name. But I do believe that the community gardens, the veterans have no intentions on touching their things. The gardeners should be so welcoming of the Veterans Foundation because they're going to have running water and bathrooms that flush instead of using a porta potty. They should be happy. They're going to have a wonderful parking lot. They're going to have electricity, lights, security cameras. You would think that they would be honored, that somebody is going to spend so much money and they get to benefit from it.
Ms. Bertrand, I'll ask you to wrap up your.
All I ask is before each one of you make a decision and vote, if you are ever a veteran, if you had a veteran in your family, would you want it to be called? Tell your family and your friends that your legacy stone for, that you bought is at the community gardens or the Forest Street Special Area. It belongs being called Veterans Tribute Park. And I ask each one of you to remember that before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Bertrand? Thanks for coming up. Councilmember Manuel.
Thank you. Thank you, President Waugh. I'm wondering if you would allow a five-minute recess just for a restroom break and come right back in five minutes?
I guess, there's still some others that wish to speak as well?
I have no objections to the councilman's request.
Okay. All right. We will adjourn for five minutes. Welcome back. Coming up on 10:30, and I know we're all getting tired, I ask that we all hang in there a few more minutes and we can, we get through the last of our speakers. And I also ask that as we wrap up here, that we continue to be, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. That we continue to be respectful and courteous to the others that are here and that are a part of this discussion. Again, the questions and the comments are, you know, these should be directed to us, the council, and not the participants or the applicants or the others that are here. So I ask that, again, we be respectful of that and courteous to those that are here. So with that, we'll get back to our public discussion and welcome our next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Deirdre Jenkins and I reside at 611 Fountain Street here in Eau Claire. Thank you so much for all of your time this evening on this subject. And I have to admit that, given the information that was presented at the very beginning of the evening concerning the actual boundaries of the, of the area here and what the Veterans Tribute Foundation was claiming that they saw as the area that they would be naming not, this is the way I understood it and I could be wrong, but that's what I heard for the first time, is that they were looking at a section of this park, and that was new information to me. I had not heard that before. My impression from the previous meeting that I attended at the Waterways and Parks was that it contained the entire Forest Street Special Area. I am a member of the community gardens and I have been a member there for five years. And I have seen many things happen in that space, aside from gardening and the many donations that have come out of the garden, all of that stuff. We have talked about that quite a bit. I've seen many birthday parties, family reunions, I've seen a wedding there, the pavilion. I've seen lots of activity in this space over the time that I have been there. It is clearly an area that is used by many people in the city. And I want to just voice for them, those who go there for their own, their own reasons, because they live in the neighborhood, because it is a place for them to go and enjoy the park. Now, I'm not saying that they wouldn't enjoy it. If it were called Veterans Tribute Park, they very well may. They very well may want to have their birthdays there, they may want to have their weddings there. I, I can't speak to the future of that, but I will admit that that could still very much be the case. But, but what I feel is important right now is that there is an ambiguity about what the space is, that is about being named. If this is a naming that is taking place in just a section of this area, quite frankly, I don't feel like I have any say-so in that. If it's, if it's an area that, if it covers the entire special street area, I do feel like I have a say in that and that I, that I want to be part of that discussion. And so I'm here tonight just saying that I want to be part of that and that I, I want to, I want to see a more community-oriented agreement to this, rather than people being left out, people not being recognized. It could, the coin can fall either way and, you know, somebody's going to feel like they're not left out. So I think that, that could happen. I believe that that could happen. I'm not entirely sure how, but I am, I'm here in favor of that. I also come from a very long line of veterans. My father was a Vietnam vet. He was shot down in Vietnam. He was pilot. And, and veterans are very important to me and my family. I have always been in favor, from the very start of hearing that the veterans wanted to have, they wanted to share this space with us. I've always been in favor of that. And sharing is, is what I feel is important. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Any questions?
Oh.
Thank you.
Kenny Lane, 827 West Hamilton, Eau Claire. I've been a resident of Eau Claire County my whole life, 55 years almost. I've served 34 years serving my country. I feel as though this Tribute Trail Park is exactly what Eau Claire County needs. As far as the gardeners not feeling as though they're involved in this or whatever, I feel as though the, the foundation has, has made accommodations, added a parking lot, more lighting, put us, put it, we have running water for their, their gardens now and electricity. And like someone said earlier, there's, there's the Paul Bunyan Camp inside of Carson Park, the, the other stuff inside of Carson Park, inside of the park that doesn't have a specific name. I mean, they have their own specific name, but they're inside of the park. We're not trying to take, they're not trying to take away from their name, so to speak, or whatever. We just like the area to be called the Veterans Tribute Trail Park. Thank you. And also, just a reminder, it was 87% of the people agreed to the name. They had a 60-day comment period, 87% of the people agreed with that name. 87%. You can't get 87% of anybody to agree on anything, so to speak, hardly. That's a pretty overwhelming majority. And I believe that's what has to be done. I mean, no matter what it is, there's, there's going to be somebody that's not happy with a decision. But it falls on you, council members, I believe, to hear the voice of your people and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lane? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President and members of the council, the city council. My name is Joe Hile. I am chairman of the Veterans Tribute, Veterans Council, which started part of this project. I'm also a foundation trustee. I have been with this project since it started when we formed the council, five, about five years ago. I'd like to start out by doing one thing. I'd like to introduce some people to you. Unfortunately, they are not here tonight. They won't be here tonight. They can't wave and say, "Hi, I'm so-and-so," or walk in that door and talk to you. Hospital corpsman Del Geis, January 1967, 19 years old, killed in action trying to save a Marine. Donald Butte, May 1967, 19 years old. His father passed away in 1966. He left his son. He didn't have to go to Vietnam to go to work and save and have freedom. They were my buddies. Don't ask me why, I was the only one that came back. Maybe it's because the Lord had something to me to do tonight to honor our veterans, to speak about the Veterans Tribute Foundation. Andy Stevens. Does anybody know Andy? His mother is sitting here in the, he passed away December 1st, 2005, in Iraq. His platoon, his company, 10 were killed, 11 were injured. Terry Mesra, anybody know that name? Killed January 16, 1971. He was a heli pilot. This is one reason why we need the Veterans Tribute Park. Now, I've got about four others here. Omar Christensen, World War II veteran, Purple Heart recipient, complications from that war. Dennis Worlang, the gentleman that started the Eau Claire Veterans Council, because he wanted veterans to have a say in what's going on, to recognize them, I should say. The first thing that a council did was to support the buying of a purchasing of a van, $65,000 we raised to purchase a van to take our veterans to Minneapolis-St. Paul and Toma, Wisconsin. Out of that second phase came what we are discussing tonight, the Veterans Tribute. Dennis was turned over in his grave after last week's meeting. And when I left that meeting, I felt that I had gotten stabbed right in the back. Mike Voss, somebody mentioned. He passed away from Agent Orange. Glenn Hampton, Purple Heart recipient, also injured in Vietnam and other complications. Bernie Hartung, how many know that name? Bernie Hartung, Purple Heart recipient, severe injuries in Vietnam and possibly some medical issues that also complicated. These men and many others, 68,000 plus Vietnam veterans, men and women, gave their lives so that you could be free to do what you wanted to do, to walk down the street, to talk to somebody else, to go on vacation, to do the things that some of these people in other places can't do. Not only that, how about the veterans from, the many veterans from the Civil War, World War I, World War II? How about Korea? How about the conflicts that are happening right now? The men and women that have given their lives to go to work and so that we have freedom to do what we want, when we want, and where we want to go? You know, how about 9/11? Another issue. What do you think Eau Claire would look like, Fall Creek, if that war was done in the back of our backyard? The destruction that would happen? I went to Vietnam because I wanted to fight that war someplace else and not in my backyard. I'm sorry, but this is really touching to me. I've seen two of my buddies over there and many more veterans that have given their lives so that we could have freedom in the state of Wisconsin. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ha. Any questions?
Who could have been the last one?
You're welcome to speak.
What's that?
You're welcome to.
Okay, thank you. My name's Kevin Phillywich. I'm a guest of your city I'm visiting. I'm not from here. So my address is 1620 Colorado Boulevard, Denver, Colorado. I've been biking around your city all day and I've been here several times. I was thinking about moving here and I've really liked your forward-thinking design in a lot of things, in approach to mobility around the city. And I appreciate that you're including a trail that's going to connect to other wider system. That's really cool. I visited this section of the city today and I was actually really impressed by the garden and the design of the structure over the garden. And I was wondering if that was taken into account in the plan? And I know that's not what this meeting is about, but I also wanted to say that I really liked that first idea of splitting it up, right? So you have, sorry it's all backwards and upside down to me, but if this section was the part that would be dedicated to the memorial? the part that would be dedicated to the memorial, and then a trail that's going through it, the separate name is important to me. Because as a visitor, as a prospective resident that might move here, what appeals to me most is, well, first of all, I should explain, I'm a high school English teacher. And the words do matter. Somebody mentioned earlier that this was a tribute park, and a tribute is honoring the living, and a memorial is honoring the dead. And along the path, there are, it's a recognition of 11 wars that the US has fought in. That is really important to recognize. And from my generation, everybody's grandfather was in World War II, and so were their brothers. And we had victory gardens. And one side note that I do want to bring up is, because you have a lot of veterans here, these are not all the veterans in your community. And this is not a popular notion to put out there, but not everybody's going to be in favor of taking what is city land and dedicating it all to one purpose. It already has a purpose right now. It's already being used, and it already has a name. What you mentioned earlier of going straight to the residents of that area and talking to them, I think that's a really important approach, and also taking the voice of the people who are already using the land. I know it's had many purposes throughout the past, but anyway, that's how it's being used right now. I'm friends with some veterans, and they have mostly turned their back on, they won't say that I'm a Marine, they'll say I'm a former Marine, mostly because they felt like they fought in unnecessary wars. Like this gentleman who was up here before me in, yeah, I apologize ahead of time, I don't mean to insult anybody, he's saying that he was fighting a war abroad before he'd have to fight it at home. We now refer to that war as a mistake and a quagmire because we went to a place where we slaughtered hundreds of thousands of people for the name of ending communism, to stop the domino, okay, sorry. We'll get back on, the other one.
Sir?
Yeah.
We're focusing here on whether you-
Right. So ultimately, I would say is that as somebody who would like to see how this park is going to be named, give them a memorial, not a tribute, but it's a memorial. And it should be there. And we should honor the sacrifice that everybody gives to live in a world that we've created. The soldiers have done their job, and we all do a job to create the world that we live in. So what is the other work that's being done on this land? It's also very important, creating the food that feeds us, that this is the source of real life. This is really important to me. So, anyway, a two-name system for this piece of land makes the most sense to me.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Anyone else here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Council President Wold. Can you please remind citizens that we have to keep comments civil, and that any comment should be brought before the council in an orderly fashion to the microphone, and commentary to other guests are not appropriate here per the culture that we're trying to build here of respect and civility with everybody.
I agree. Hopefully, we can wrap this up and move forward now. And again, I'll ask if there's anyone else that wishes to speak.
When is tomorrow's meeting?
Tomorrow's meeting will start, will begin at 4 o'clock-
Thank you.
-here in the chamber.
Are you?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep. I will close the public discussion then, regards to this evening's agenda, looking So I guess we'll find out first if who's still here. Robert?
Hey, ladies. Is that you?
Robert, I, Andres Kiwes, those on Drummond?
Skiing.
Kelsey Black? Kelsey?
Hello.
Okay. If I could just, if you want to work your way up here, and I'm just going to go into what this includes, for those of you that wish to speak to see, you have not signed up, please do so. Once there is an opportunity, will come up, and if you would, just introduce yourself with your name and your address. Again, it must be a City of Eau Claire address. The public comment period is for those living or working in the city. Please note that your thoughts or ideas should be regarding issues or concerns of citywide application, and please do not comment on issues that are on tonight's agenda, as council wants and needs to hear those comments during the noticed hearing or discussion. You'll have three minutes to speak with the same lighting system. When the yellow light comes on, you'll be, you'll have one minute left. Is it Black? Is that?
That's Black.
Ms. Black? Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I have met several of you before. It's lovely to see your faces again, President Wold, yourself included. Thank you very much for taking your time today to listen to what I have to say. I am standing before you today with the objective of hopefully seeking matching funding for the Boyd Skate Park. I know that this sounds a little bit left field, because from what I understand, the cannery is a very big priority for the City of Eau Claire, the cannery district and the development there. And I also think that's very important. But with my background also as well-being, born citizen of Eau Claire, this is my hometown. I love it here, and I love the citizens, the culture, and I've chosen to also raise my family here because, in my opinion, this is a very prideful place to live and thrive and grow. The progressive status here is something that I really look forward to teaching my son. And I think it's a really valuable perspective that a lot of people could have regarding the diverse, the diversity throughout the entire town in terms of interests, art of all sorts. I mean, I can't even tell you everything that I've learned about the varieties of different mediums. Unfortunately, it doesn't seem like the skating community really has the support that they wish that they had. I've been skating for nine years and can't quite relate to the skate park skaters in the way that I would like to. So I'll be straightforward about that as well. But I do find it very important to be able to create an environment where every single person feels that they can be seen and heard, and also feel like agreements are being held up as well. From what I understand, that this was a conversation that was brought up recently about matching Boyd Park funding between Passion Board Shop and City Council. I was not involved firsthand in those conversations, but I just want to let you know that I very much support that cause. And I think that that's very important, is putting a skate park in Boyd Park as well as the cannery district. And that Eau Claire district needs three skate parks, three skate parks. Because I think it will definitely bring out the best in our skating community. Because when you change the way that you look at things, the things that you look at change. Then don't we all want to have a little bit better of a skating community and youth community in our area? I do. My son's three, and we're going to be living here for quite a while. So I very much look forward to bringing him to the new skate parks as he's learning to skate at his very young age. And I really appreciate you all taking the time to listen to me today, as I try to make that possible for my peers and the rest of my family as well. Thank you for everything.
Any question? Oh, actually, I can't ask you any questions. Thank you for coming up and for staying so long.
Thank you for staying so long.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, I'm Dane Neville, 1211 Taft Avenue, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Like our prior speaker, I am an Eau Claire resident for almost my entire life. I went to school at South Middle School, graduated from Memorial, and ended up going to college in the University of Wisconsin system, actually at Stout. At this point, I'm 24 years old, and I've been skateboarding for more than half of my life. Turned 24 this year, and every single day since then, it's been more than half of my life, all of my free time, has been dedicated to this athletic activity. And in a lot of ways, for me, it's, it's been a refuge, you know? When you're not good at baseball, and you're not, you know, good at football, and you want to be outside, and you want to be doing something, you need an outlet. And for me, skateboarding has always been that. However, I've also lived in and of Eau Claire with a skate park that was two miles away that I had to pay for. And I've lived in and of Eau Claire where there was no free skate park. There was no skate park at all. In fact, there wasn't a free skate park until I graduated from high school and went to college. However, in that short period of time, there's been an incredible growth in the skate community. And at this point, we're outpacing what we have. 2,200 square feet is not a large enough space for more than three people at once to be riding. Yet regularly, you'll see 10, 15, 20 people at the skate park patiently waiting their turns. However, we're forced into this strange dichotomy where we are expected to be at this location and active in a, in a safe way, and it's outlawed on the streets. And when there's not enough room, we're forced to skate around town, whether it's the bike trail or ledges you see. And it's an, it's a quandary, because where are we at? We don't have enough space for our growing community, and we're outlaws in the streets. And as a community, as a city council, we need to figure out how to move past that. We can't have kids getting $200 skate tickets for riding their skateboards. If there's 2,200 square feet to skateboard, it doesn't make sense. And, you know, I thank you guys so much for your time. It's past 10:30 at night, and, you know, there's more important issues that are pertinent, perhaps, but not for the skateboarding community. Because we're, we have nothing else to, you know, we have nowhere else to go. And so either we're going to be a nuisance in the street, or we can be community members, but we have to do it together. And that's, that's my bit. Thank you guys so much. I really appreciate your time. Have a nice evening.
Thanks for coming in.
Good evening. City Council, thank you so much for your time. I know it's been a grueling evening so far for you guys. I'm here also to speak on behalf of Skate Park. I've been a resident, 2214 Peters Drive, sorry, forgot my address. I've been a resident of Eau Claire since 2013. I am a graduate of University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. I am currently working as a registered nurse in this area. So I am a bona fide adult with, you know, an adult career and everything now. But I am also a veteran of the military and a, and a father. So Skate Park does a lot for me as a veteran. It helps me deal with the physical exercise and the, the working on something challenging helps dealing with issues with PTSD and things like that. So it has a therapeutic benefit for myself. As a father, it is a safe and educational place to go with my, my kids. My son has been, he is, I'm both a biker and I've been skateboarding the last couple years. I've been learning. My son has decided he is a biker, and he's been going at three years old, was going to the skate park with his little balance bike, his little Strider. And the skaters, they'd be ripping around, and they would, he would stand there patiently. That would be intimidating, be around, you know, some of these skateboarders at three years old. And I tried to encourage him, but in going, he has learned etiquette. He's learned about how to, how to watch and how to wait your turn. He was a little three-year-old patiently waiting, and, you know, the skaters in this community have been awesome. They've been, they would be like, "Okay, yeah, it's your turn." And then they would wait for this little three-year-old to, you know, roll in and ride around a little bit, and they'd be like, "Okay, now, hurry, you know, finish your turn." So it's been great for him in, in learning to how to be a member of a community where it's, it's unstructured free play. It's, everyone's trying to better themselves, and everyone's encouraging. It's a place of encouragement, and it's a place to learn those skills. There's no referee, there's no coach, there's no one enforcing the rules, but there, you're learning how to be a member of a community, and how to do it, not because somebody's making you, but because that's the, the right thing to do. So it's been a very beneficial experience for my son and my, and my three-year-old daughter, as, as we've gone as a family. So there definitely needs to be more spaces for that. I've, I've seen these skaters befriend and kids from various backgrounds, some of them from very tough situations. And that just allows them to, to speak into their lives in a very beneficial way. Understand, there's a MO, was it MOU? Is that the term for it? That, that we have. Understand that may need to be readdressed. I'm all in favor and, and willing to, you know, be part of the discussion of readdressing that to get funding. We're a small group without a lot of money, and we've raised a lot for us, and any help we, we could to get this accomplished would be appreciated. So I thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming up. Thomas Kemp? Mr. Kemp? All right. Is there anyone else that was here that was hoping to speak?
I'm 25, but unfortunately, they killed her out.
All right. We will close the public commentary period, and if there are no objections, we will adjourn. Thank you.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
The City Council meeting will come to order. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Benjamin?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Kristofferson?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Plinkhammer?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Weldon?
Here.
Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us here this afternoon on our Tuesday, July 9th legislative session for the Eau Claire City Council. During this legislative session, the council deliberates and takes actions on the agenda items before us today. City staff and council members have spent a great deal of time preparing for this meeting. Thank you to the residents that joined us last night for your comments and thoughts during our public hearings, and also those that have reached out to us today with their emails and phone calls. Thank you to Valley, Valley Media Works for live streaming this proceeding. For those of you not able to join us in person to watch, please visit valleymediaworks.org or visit the channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. It is also available at 101.9 FM. You can also find past meetings on YouTube under the Triple Valley Media Works channel. We have a full agenda, so we will get started. First item of business is our consent agenda. Does council have any questions in regards to the consent agenda? Council wish to pull any of the items off of the council, of the consent agenda? Seeing none on a motion by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Lor, the consent agenda is moved. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Benjamin?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Plinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weldon?
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed. There are no proclamations today, so we will move right into our business agenda. With agenda item number 11, a final resolution approving the redesign of the intersection of Roosevelt Avenue and inclusion into Project 2019-22. Does council have any further questions for Mr. Solberg or staff? Does council have any further questions for Mr. Solberg or staff? Councilmember Gregert?
President Weld, I would have a few questions for Mr. Solberg.
Good evening or good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. I know we had a long chat this afternoon, but just wanted to clarify for, for folks, particularly with the lighting issue that came up from the neighborhood. And I understand that a lot of, you know, when we voted in March, it defined quite a bit about what we're doing as far as lighting at that point. And I guess what I'm wondering is if you could maybe relay some of the concerns maybe from those folks and in terms of what is being proposed that is different than the Summit Avenue design?
So I think the, there is a misunderstanding amongst some of the residents along State Street yesterday. One of the residents brought in the highlighted portion of my engineer's report from the March meeting that stated that we would be continuing the lighting theme that exists currently north of Garfield Avenue. And it's our intent to extend it south of Garfield Avenue to the Roosevelt intersection. And those are the lower pedestrian grade lights that are considered white way lighting. We consider everything that isn't an XL Energy light that you see attached to a power pole in the city, white way lighting, whether it's what you see on Claremonte Avenue or what you see on a trail system or Hastings Way or Summit. Any additional lighting that forms a system to better illuminate the entire sidewalk is what we refer to as white way lighting instead of just intersection lighting. So I think there was a misunderstanding that they felt that we were going to be installing the taller system like we have on Summit that combines those tall 30-foot Cobra heads with the short ones with 22-foot high lights as you see on, on Summit. And what we proposed and what was approved by the city council was from Roosevelt Avenue to the north was to have the lower pedestrian scale lighting that you see currently north of, of Garfield Avenue. And then our taller 30-foot lights would remain along State Street as they currently are. There's one per intersection. You can see those out there. They're, they're silver in color. The only thing that we're adding are those shorter lights that are decorative in nature underneath that. The concern that they had was with the color on those. And generally, the color of the light with LEDs are a purer, whiter, bluer light than a high pressure sodium light on a scale of 0 to 10,000. With the higher the number, the whiter the light, and the lower the number, the yellower the light. High pressure sodium is at about 2,200. The lights that people don't seem to be too favorable for that were installed by XL Energy on intersections are 4,000K. Our lights on Summit are 4,000K. And since we've installed those lights, the lighting industry have introduced 3,000K lights that are for the purpose that we are using here that get us closer to that spectrum of 2,200K that high pressure sodium are. So it'll be a, a brighter color or brighter hue light than a high pressure sodium, but it won't be the same blue color that you see on Summit. And then in addition to that Summit, the lights have a hat on them. So the, the lights are shielded and it, and it guides the light downward. But because they're 22 feet tall, you still get that cone that comes out backwards that's visual. So we're looking at installing with the lights on State Street, a back shield. So the light from the, the lower one will not only be warmer in color, but it'll have a shield that will project the light forward onto the street and sidewalk and will prevent it from going backwards. So if they want the exact color that is north of Garfield with a high pressure sodium, the only way to achieve that is to go with high pressure sodium bulbs for that. Those are not consistent with the city's sustainability goals. It's contrary to the city's goal to be carbon neutral by 2050. That's why LED lights are the industry standard for, for installation. So the style is there. There's a misunderstanding with that, but the color, it will be a little bit brighter than those darker high pressure sodium. But that's, that's, we're going to do as best a job as we can with our LED to make it, because we're not happy with the lighting on, on Summit ourselves for that. So we said in our open houses that this was not going to be a Summit-style lighting, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Solberg? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, President Weld. Mr. Solberg, I, one of the points in the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee's letter from the Chair, Aaron Salmon, was, you know, looking to having the, this design for Roosevelt and State to consider doing, I get, you know, they, they definitely support the, the median that is there on the, on the north part of the intersection. And, but they recommended, and I guess I'm quoting here, extend the planned median within State Street on the north side of the intersection so that the median extends to the south side of the crosswalk. And, you know, I spoke with, with Mr. Salmon today about this and corresponded a bit more via email with us. But how do you see it working for, for us to potentially do something like that where we have that median provide more of a refuge for pedestrians where there's a section of it that's actually on the south side of the crosswalk and, and provides more of a refuge so that if either cars that are turning northbound from east, northbound on State Street from eastbound Roosevelt do not kind of cut into that crosswalk refuge. And then also so that drivers who may be heading north on State are not as likely to be able to hop a curb or, or just go straight into the pedestrian in the refuge area.
If there was a desire to have the crosswalk so it's bookended by a physical structure for that, if this were extended, it would prohibit semi trucks that were reported that go into Roosevelt to the Davie Center back there. They would not be able to make a left turn out on the, out on the State Street. The only way that we would be able to allow left turns on the State Street with a, with a truck is to have the island where it is now and to allow them to encroach over this line here and make a wide sweeping. If we brought this out, on the back end of the semi trucks would be on that island. It would knock out the sign that we have. So we would have to try and sign those up to Garfield if they were to make a left turn to go up. We don't have counts on how many trucks coming out, and we're talking semi trucks now. We don't have counts on how many go this way versus making a right turn. But that was one thing that we had checked prior to coming over to the council meeting this afternoon. The other way you could accomplish it is if you leave the physical island here and you move the crosswalk back and you cross north of the intersection. We had our crosswalk located at this location just because of line of sight. Pedestrians tend to use the, the straightest route and we weren't, we didn't have a lot of confidence that it would go around. But in our discussions with the RRFB, if it's included with that, having that, that push button or having something that would potentially draw students to go up and around may entice them to divert slightly to, to get up there. And we're not talking about a mid-block crossing. It would be a subtle, a subtle move, you know, up into this location. And then the front end of the island, if it were in that turning movement, would then have to be depressed or be mountable. Concrete, it would still be a different color and a texture, but it would have to allow the, the back end wheels of a trailer to traverse it.
Thank you. Mind if I have a follow-up? So it's really because of semi trailers? What about buses or other types of large vehicles?
Buses can make this movement.
Okay. So even if we were to extend the, the median further south?
This is the minimum for the buses to come out of there. But buses don't make a left turn out of here currently. They come out of McKinley. So, and it was reported at our open houses that semis are, I mean, the one thing is to prohibit truck movements in there. But it was reported that the university does rely on semis for deliveries of products. So if that was a desire, the, the most practical way to do it would be to locate the crosswalk back.
I could have a follow-up question. So how many feet back would you say is the minimum you'd have to move the crosswalk then?
It's approximately 15 feet back about to here with the turning movements. So it's not, not a, you know, again, not a mid-block. It's similar to where it was located when the roundabout was approved on here.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Solberg? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Could you talk a little bit more about the implications for, I guess, on ramping and off ramping of the crosswalk if, if you were to move it a little bit north? In particular, we have, I think, an interest as well to make sure people with visual impairments, that they still know where the road delineates. And just wondering, what does that look like for moving that crosswalk and how will people be sure that they know where they're going?
So if, if the crosswalk were moved further up the street, then this crossing would be removed and it would look like this. We wouldn't have it going across. So if you're coming up the sidewalk on Roosevelt, you would feel a texture change and you would feel that there isn't this detectable warning field that is here to cross. How, how to wayfind down to here, I guess, would be something we would have to explore. You can have signage, but if you're experiencing visual impairment, it's not as intuitive for that. So once you're in this location, then we would build the infrastructure and you would feel the concrete. You'd feel a detectable warning field. You would feel it here and you would have that. But to turn and go this way, I guess I'm not familiar with the tools that would be available to allow a citizen the notice of doing that for that. I should note with, throughout the city, this is a frequent configuration with an island on Third Avenue, on Bellinger Street, on Burt Street. We do have crosswalks that are in advance of the refuge island like that. So this, this is a very common design. I do see the, understand the desire to have the crosswalk bracketed by concrete. But this is, this design isn't something that is outside of the norm that's been working in Eau Claire, so.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, President Weld. As a follow-up, I was interested last night to hear if, if staff would have a, an amendment for council to consider with the wayfinding signs and kind of the hybrid approach.
I did include in the recommendation to include, the, the resolution approves the intersection as presented in the pack of material and the wayfinding was included with that. So it was my understanding that it was included, or it's my intent that it's included with that. And we do have a wayfinding program that not only would do this intersection, but it also for other points throughout town. So if it's approved as, as we have it presented, it would include the wayfinding as part of this effort unless council decided to not include that.
One more follow-up. Thank you. So to that end, so thank you. That helps me understand that and is a little tidier. And then would that also include the traffic count efforts that would be done after, you know, six months or something like that? So you, staff can ascertain if this is working or not. And if it's not working, then to consider prohibiting movement on the left turn lane?
Yes, we're, we will be working on Garfield Avenue next year for construction. And with that, with the lane configurations and how, how much storage we need at that intersection, we'll be doing our turning movement counts and gathering that data, not only for Roosevelt intersection, but Park and Garfield and McKinley. Not only for the Garfield project, but we're interested to see how the calming and how the treatments that we're proposing with the project perform with what their nationwide statistics say they should perform, whether it be speed or whether it be safety and so forth. So, yeah, we will be gathering all of that data and we have our baseline data that we gathered this, earlier this year for that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Solberg? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, President Weld. Mr. Solberg, I guess on the long, along the lines of data collection, I guess, the, it's great to see, obviously, in the previous version and in this version, we have the, the, the speed feedback sign facing folks that are heading northbound down the hill. And I was wondering if that device will actually be able to collect data over time or if they're, and if it doesn't, is there an option to purchase one that does?
There are models out there that do collect data and, so we can get our mean speed. There are some that are just basic feedback signs. So if the budget will support it, we would like to gather as much data as we can. Our traffic signals, as we upgrade those, gather data for our traffic signals with the cameras on those as well. So anytime we have an opportunity to install equipment that will help us make better decisions in the future, we try to include that technology in with that. So that is something that we would be looking at for this.
Any other questions for Mr. Solberg? I don't see any. Thank you for coming up. So a motion by councilmember Kristofferson and seconded by councilmember Klinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gregert?
President Weld, I certainly appreciate all the work that staff and citizens in this council have done to work through this intersection and other aspects of the State Street project. Through some conversations this afternoon and feedback from, from folks, I have some thoughts about some additional signage that could be helpful. That, that, you know, running it by staff was considered appropriate, I guess, and staff can confirm that as I introduce a couple of amendments that would reflect some of that thinking. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the first of them.
All right.
That's great. Thank you. So I guess one of the issues... Yeah, so the, the motion, the first, I said I'd like to, to make a motion to amend... So the, and I'll pass this out to everyone. Yeah, so I'll just read it so folks have it as well. Motion to amend item number 11, final resolution approving the redesign of the intersection of Roosevelt Avenue and inclusion in project 2019-22 on the agenda of this city council meeting of July 9th as follows. Amendment, the inclusion of a stop here for pedestrian sign in, in compliance with MUT CD standards on the eastbound stop approach of Roosevelt Avenue. And I'll explain that after I pass out the...
For a second, councilmember, second it?
I think there's some extra copies that we, so staff can have one. But, and then I also have a, an image that I'll pass out of the sign in question here, which is labeled Amendment 1 because there's actually two different sets of signage on this, this one piece of paper. One of them is for the Second Amendment. And so essentially, the reasoning behind a sign that says stop here for pedestrian, and it's actually a symbol of a pedestrian is in fact the, the filler word there. So essentially, an arrow pointing down, if you're heading eastbound on Roosevelt Avenue, there'll be kind of a reminder to, to, to not block the crosswalk, to not, you know, to pay attention to pedestrians that may be using that crosswalk. Because what we found in the walk audits and the other, other feedback we've had and just experience of that, where people are pulling out to do the left turn from eastbound Roosevelt to northbound State or doing the right, the right turn from eastbound Roosevelt to southbound State, they're often trying to inch out in order to get a good view or be in to inch out in order to get a good view or be in a good position to be able to, to get out in the intersection. And they end up blocking the crosswalk or not realizing there's a pedestrian crossing from their right when they're looking left to turn right. So given that, this proposal by our engineering staff does not include any sort of restriction on left turns and therefore we cannot include a refuge island, I figured this was an approach that could, at least through signage, remind people that pedestrians need to cross here, need to cross Roosevelt at the intersection. And it is official sign that we use in other places within the city. We use it actually across from our City Hall building downtown where people are crossing farwell at Gibson Street. So just wanted to put that out there for discussion.
Great. Councilmember Worthman, did you, no? Any discussion from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
No.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
And that motion passes, or the amendment, I'm sorry, passes. Back to the original item. Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld. I'd like to make a motion to amend as well the same resolution as described before. This time, the amendment is the inclusion of the following bicycle-related signs, one of them being bike lane and then below that ends, so it'd be bike lane ends. And then, and bicycles may use full lane. And this would be going northbound on State Street. So I'll pass that out as well. Again, there should be an extra copy for staff. And then you can also, I guess, maybe I should wait for a second.
Sir, is there a second to Councilmember Worthman? Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you. So I guess in your reference sheet of the signage, it's Amendment 2. So the reasoning for this is that the bike lane ends and just off the, the map of the, the drawing of the intersection that we have in front of us in the packet, at Bartlett Court, the bike lanes end. And it's, you know, pretty common practice to notify bicyclists that a bike lane is ending. So we can, so I think it's appropriate to add this signage. And then also the fact that the bike lane is transitioning into a, a, a share-o, essentially a lane that a bicyclist is meant to, to share the lane with drivers. It's a sign that the bikes, bicyclists may use full lane indicates that they have the right to do that and drivers need to be warned of that and bicyclists need to be notified of that transition. So given that we don't have a room for bike lanes on this whole corridor and we have to make that transition in, in this road design, I think that this signage, if it's placed just south of Bartlett Court where, a little bit before what those bike lanes end, it'll provide proper warning. Although I, I'm still concerned about that transition because it's going to be happening at 30 miles an hour or around that. Since we can't really change the, the, the design of the intersection at this point, signage is about the next best thing we can do. So.
Any other comments? Any other discussion in regards to the amendment? Seeing, Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Maybe a, would be a question for Mr. Silver, that with all the extra signage that's going in to this intersection, flashing yellow lights, crosswalk sign, is there a danger that we're going to have so many signs that there are drivers to look at and they're not going to be able to see it in traffic?
Mr. Silver.
That was a, a concern that we discussed with Councilmember Gregor earlier this afternoon. These signs here, as you see them typically in communities are mounted on their streetlights, around their, on their overhead lighting, and they're smaller in diameter than the large diamond-shaped signs, excuse me, as well as is the speed limit signs. So with these being mounted away from our regulatory signs and a little bit smaller scale, we felt that these, we felt comfortable with the amendment including these for that. But there were, there are versions of these that are the larger three and four-foot square signs that we weren't as comfortable with because then you have, you know, you're looking at this and you're looking here and it's diverting you away from, you know, paying proper attention to the intersection. So with that, these signs that were specified here are the smaller scale and they go kind of off to the side, onto the, onto the white-way lighting that we will have on the corridor out there. So.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Any other discussion? Councilmember Christopherson.
President, I have a, just a question for Councilmember Gregor. Not being a cyclist myself, during the, the conversation about this intersection, there was conversation that the, some bicyclists and maybe most bicyclists would actually use the sidewalk or might divert onto Roosevelt. I'm, I'm just wondering what your thoughts are in introducing this. Do you think most of them will stay in the traffic lane? Is it confusing? Would you prefer that they were on the sidewalk? I'm just wondering.
Councilmember Gregor.
Yeah, I mean, I think some of what's happening here is, is a, a bit of an experiment, I guess, because we're talking about, you know, a street right now that I think a lot of people avoid on a bicycle because it doesn't have a lot of facilities, it doesn't have bike lanes, it doesn't have share-os on it. And a lot of people do tend to take the sidewalk, including myself. I think that, you know, there are certain parts of the sidewalk that we are making wider, but they tend to be on the hill portion. And then once you get to Bartlett Court, they, and the street width is about the same as it is now, and the sidewalk is about the same as it is now. So it starts to narrow down both on the street and the sidewalk. And the sidewalk gets much closer to the street. I think that, I think we're going to see a variety of different types of users on this street in terms of bicyclists. And there are going to be some that'll choose the road, and I would think more would choose the road under this design than currently choose the road. And I think we'll have, still have quite a few people taking the sidewalk. So it's going to be a mix, but it's still a question for just seeing like how things change with, with this design. But I, I do think that, you know, in the long term, it would be good for the city to find ways for people to more easily get to side streets like Wilson or Park Avenue so that they can avoid State Street. But I think at, at the very least, people need to be able to get to Roosevelt Avenue because then they can turn left or right at the bottom of the hill. Bartlett Court is almost too close for you to easily take a right turn on a bike because you have to brake so much. So we're going to see a lot of different things happen. I, I think having, making sure that drivers realize that there's a possibility that there's going to be a bicycle in their lane is, is pretty important. And they need to be aware that they need to slow down or they need to share the, share the road with bicyclists. I, I think this helps communicate that. So.
Councilmember Christopherson, did you have a follow-up or?
No, that, thank you.
Any other discussion in regards to the amendment proposed by Councilmember Gregor? Seeing none, city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
No.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
No.
Lor.
No.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
And that amendment passes. Back to the original resolution. Is there any other further discussion? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I would have a request for the city manager to just communicate back with some of the constituents who had those concerns about the lighting and to please coordinate with staff to give the message that was given this evening so that they have the assurance that, with the, maybe not assurance, but they have the information available to them as clarification. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Beaton.
Council President, I just wanted to make a note. I, I received a note from a constituent that the audio is not working on the community television, just so we know.
Okay. I know it's been in and out, but in the meantime, can ask everyone to speak a little louder? Are we, it looks like they're looking into it. So, thank you. Any other discussion or comments in regards to the agenda item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
And that item passes. Congratulations. And again, thank you to the community, to the neighborhood, to our staff, to Mr. Silver and all of his staff, and to the council for putting this, putting this through and making sure that, that it works and that we're hopefully going to create a safer, a safer intersection. So thank you, everybody. Moving on to agenda item number 12, resolution ordering the repair of sidewalk and curb and gutter according to the section 66.0907 Wisconsin statutes at 29 locations, beginning at 521 Second Avenue. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Silver? Seeing none, on a motion by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Benjamin, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the, city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Agenda item number 13, a resolution approving the naming of the Forest Street Special Area to Veterans Tribute Park. Our city manager Peters did receive a note from the applicant this afternoon and it was forwarded on to council asking that we postpone this decision until our second meeting in July, which would be in two weeks. All right, we have a motion and a second? I'm sorry, so Councilmember Klinkhammer moved it?
Council President, if I could just, if I could just ask, Councilmember Klinkhammer made a motion to postpone this item. Is that correct? Has it been, was it moved originally or not?
It has not been moved. I was seeking a motion to either postpone or move the item.
Okay.
Councilmember Klinkhammer, you're making a motion to postpone?
Yes.
Is there a second? Councilmember Emanuel?
I, I have a clarifying question. I'm not offering a second. I would like to clarify a procedural question.
Okay.
Is there possibility for the body to have some discussion before we might entertain that? And do we all, and do we need to have the item just moved in general before we can move to postpone procedurally?
City Attorney Nick?
Procedurally, it's fine. In terms of your preference to have discussion, that's entirely for the, the board. So you have a motion on the table. Obviously, it needs a second to go any further. As I've said before at council meetings, and we train annually on motions to postpone, should not be used to avoid or terminate debate. I don't take it that that was the way that Councilmember Klinkhammer was, was, was moving it, you know, it was just, you know, at, at the request of applicant. So it's a, a standard item. But that's always something you kind of keep an eye on, you know, because to close debate, if there's an objection, requires a two-thirds vote. But basically, the way this, this council has handled it for many years is that if anybody, you know, wants to continue debate, they just kind of raised a point of order and you can continue the discussion and you can take up a motion to postpone once any discussion is concluded.
Thank you. City Attorney Nick. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. Just a follow-up to that. In the, this is also a procedural question. In the event that there's a, a motion to postpone, and if there is not a second, and then if council does move into discussion, and then an amendment to postpone is offered a second time, is that allowed to be offered two times in a transaction?
City Attorney Nick?
Yes, it's allowed.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion to postpone. Is there a second? I guess a procedural question. Can the council president second?
You, you can, yeah.
I guess I would like to second the motion to postpone. Is there any discussion? Pardon? I'm sorry. Councilmember Klinkhammer, did you have any other additional, did you want to speak to the motion?
Oh, may I? After listening to all the citizens speak last evening, I have some of the questions that were asked about.
Councilmember Klinkhammer, if I could have you speak up, your microphone for some reason is not working. So.
All right, I'll speak louder.
All right, thank you.
After listening to many of the comments last evening, I'm operating this motion to postpone because there are a lot of people that wanted that time to resolve whatever differences that still remain. It's seemed like a reasonable course of action, especially because they're requesting it. So I don't, I don't see what the problem.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Weld. And I'm going to vote no on this motion, but not because I disagree with the sentiment of it. I believe it needs a little more time than that, either a 30-day or a 60-day postponement for the different groups to come together to decide, not only to clarify what we heard last night, but to decide on how to work together on this. So I, I agree with the sentiment of it, but I would like to see it postponed for a 60-day period.
Councilmember Beaton's hand was up first. Councilmember Beaton.
I, I also think that this could use more time than two weeks. Why I didn't second, I actually really strongly feel that this should be postponed, but based on where tensions are and where relationships are now, I don't think that two weeks is enough to, to resolve that. I, I, I think I'd like to actually offer an amendment to this motion to, to postpone to six.
I think I'd like to actually offer an amendment to this motion to postpone to 60 days rather than two weeks.
We have a motion to postpone -- or we have a motion to amend the postponement from two weeks to 60 days. Is there a second? Councilmember Loar?
Two seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the mover first. Councilmember Beaton, did you want to speak?
Well, I think I already said my piece about that part.
Okay. Councilmember Loar, did you want to speak?
Yes. I want to postpone for 60 days because of I want both sides to working together instead of, you know, one team win and the other lose, loser, because that happening. And I heard both, the public speaking last night, and I'd like to have them both working together, come to a solution, and then we can go forward. So, get a little more time, and 60 days will be preferable time for them to work in together.
Thank you, Councilmember Loar. Councilmember Klinkhammer?
This may be a question for our parliamentarian, Attorney Nick. If the parties involved reached an agreement by this first meeting in August, does this motion, if passed, prevent them from bringing it forward in August, in a month?
City Attorney Nick?
Yeah, I think it would, and one of the things I was going to suggest doesn't mean the body needs to do this, but, right, to answer. So, a straight postponement, if you set a number of days, whether it's next meeting or 60 days, that's when it's going to come back. You know, so this one would come back two months out. But you can also say up to, you know, two months out, or such earlier date as, you know, when the parties have an agreement, something like that. So, we can put it back on the first possible agenda if and when there's sort of a collective meeting of the minds. And, you know, sooner than later on that is probably preferable if it can be found, you know, because we have a fleeting construction season, and as I think you heard last evening, you know, the veterans group, at their choosing, under the MOU terms, you know, could potentially start transferring funds over, you know, in the coming weeks to months, and there could be construction that would go forward. Or if you wait too long for that, you might miss your window still in 2019.
The Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, President Weld. I appreciate the opportunity to have more time, and I think some time and space will help to yield a better product in the end. I do have a couple of questions, though. I guess I'll put out a couple of items that I think are really important in the equation, and I'm not sure how we get there, but I just want to put them on the table. I think it's important for us to also call out if we're going to have -- if council would like to have another public hearing, or if we say the public hearing has occurred last night, and people are always welcome to use a public comment period. So, I think that's important to call out. I also think it's important to call out who are all parties involved. Is it the applicant only? Is it the Veterans Unity Group? Is it the Forest Street Garden Group? Is it the North River Front's Neighborhood Association? So, I think if council wants parties to come together, I think it would be responsible for us to name what parties we're expecting to come together. And if so, is that even allowable? Are we allowed to do that with an applicant? The other is, what happens if the applicant says they're not interested in the project anymore here on this location? As I read the email, it says, after the request for two weeks, it says, "This gives the foundation time to explore all of our options and make the right decision about the project going forward." I don't hear a definitive decision that that would stay here or not, one way or the other. So, what happens if we postpone it, and the applicant says we would like to move locations? So, I would seek some guidance around, do we need to clarify who all the parties are? Do we need to seek clarification around the public hearing? And what happens in the event that the applicant withdraws their application, which I would like to say I sincerely would not want that to happen? And I most sincerely want to have a park, a Veterans Tribute Park, those words explicitly, that honors veterans here in our city.
If I could just weigh in, also, thank you, Councilmember Emanuel. But I guess the reason I seconded was getting back to the concerns that were just mentioned in regards to the applicant has stated that, you know, they need some time for their board to make some decisions on how they wish to proceed. And so, my thought was that we would give them the two weeks to decide how they want to come back to the council in regard -- and clear up any concerns or questions that we had and that the community had, and even that their organization has. And so, and at that which time, in two weeks, it sounds like they would have at least made some decisions in those regards. And at that point, we could decide whether or not an additional postponement would be necessary or not. And so, I feel like this is the applicant's wish. They are the only applicant that we've heard from and that has made this proposal. And so, I would think at this time, we should be respectful of their wishes. And then if we feel like it's necessary, we can postpone at the next meeting. Secondly, too, and maybe we can do it in the form of a friendly, but I agree, as Councilmember Nick or City Attorney Nick pointed out, we should state up to 60 days or a certain meeting or such. 60 days may not fall on a date of a meeting, so. Any other discussion?
City Manager Peters?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Normally, I would not weigh in, but there's just been talking to Mr. Solberg and Mr. Pipinger, just as for information as you're making your decision. We had planned on bringing back the bid awards for not only the Forest Street work, but also for the work for this first phase at the first meeting in August. And if this is pushed out past that, just be aware that that will most likely delay the project and push the completion of the project into the spring of 2020.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Just two thoughts that I do wonder whether if we postpone for 60 days, it still allows for the applicant's process, whether it's going to the board or further discussion, to still happen. So, that's just a thought to throw out for consideration. And maybe that takes them two weeks, maybe that takes them longer, but they still have that opportunity to clarify what their own position is and how they want to proceed. I think the second thing is, is it clearly states in the MOU that the bids go out when the full $2 million, I believe it's $2 million, has been raised and deposited into city accounts. So, in some ways, while I guess there is a hope to do it soon, it also depends on them fully fundraising that amount, at least according to the MOU that is on the books.
Councilmember Benjamin?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I want to speak to my support for the original amendment to postpone for two weeks rather than for a hard 60-day timeline. And the reason why is that, you know, looking at how the organizers put this information together, they followed proper procedure. They went through the application process. They followed all of that to the T. And it's my feeling that, you know, we want to ensure that they have the confidence to move forward with the project and that they are able to take some semblance of lead with regards to what happens next. So, in order to instill that confidence, to show that we, you know, we still are in support of the project, I do believe that it's a better move to postpone for two weeks with the understanding that there's always a way to extend that if we need to versus push it out to a hard, longer term. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Benjamin. Any other discussion? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I just have a question. So, what I'm hearing seems different than what I heard last night is, does the construction can't start until the name is established? Is that what it's saying right now? Okay. No.
Councilmember -- Mr. Pipinger, did you want to?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
That would be up to the Veterans Foundation. It could start if they would be willing. I mean, we'll get the bids back in the first meeting in August. So, we would move ahead with construction if the money was there to do that. But that would be up to them to give us the green light on that.
Okay. On our end, it's -- it would be up to them to?
Yes. The bids will come back, and we'll know what the cost will be. It will be at that point having the money transferred to the city so we could do that portion of the project, the Phase One of the project.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Beaton?
All right. Respectfully, I'm hearing two different things, though, and so I'm very confused. So, perhaps, city manager, you could explain a little bit more. What you meant by postponing could delay this project until the spring?
Go ahead.
City Manager?
Yeah, thank you. So, I apologize if it was confusing. Both answers are correct. So, to the extent that there's uncertainty to the organization, and, I mean, we will bring the bids back, but as Mr. Pipinger said, it still then is up to the veterans group to follow through with their portion of it, to be able to make it go forward. And so, to the extent that, I mean, what I was trying to say is that, you know, we have the process, and I just wanted you to be aware that the bids will be coming back in August, and it is up to the -- as Mr. Pipinger said, it's up to the veterans group to decide, you know, whether they want us to be going forward or not going forward at that point in time.
Any other questions? Did you have a follow-up? Councilmember Beaton?
I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Worthman's question about the MOU and the project starting contingent upon full fundraising. You hear that question?
Yep.
Mr. Pipinger? Okay.
Sure. And if we recall, back in February, when we looked at the site plans and approved the site plans, we also looked at and approved a phasing of the project, because it is a very large project, and it's got a, you know, significant amount of money that had to be fundraised. So, we looked at that last night with the Phase One being the trail, and then the gathering area being done in this year, in 2019. And then looking at 2020 with Phase Two, with the lighting and the paving of the parking lot. Phase Three included the construction of the rest room, and then Phase Four would be the monuments that would go along the trails. So, that was what was presented in February and approved by the city council.
So, the MOU does not say that the full $2 million needs to be raised before the project can be constructed?
Well, the MOU does say that the $2 million would have to be raised in cash and given to the city, but in cases like this, we many times we phase projects rather than having it done all at one time, if it's possible to do that. And that's helpful to some of the fundraising. And quite honestly, I, you know, they're at 1.4 million. They could get there in time for the construction, you know, by this time. But our point this year is that we will be spending about $700,000 on the trail and the gathering area. So, we're not going to be doing the entire project in one year.
Any other questions? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I don't have a question for Mr. Pipinger, but I would just like to express my support of our communication with the Veterans Foundation. I think that the conversation is important, but it's also unsettling. And I think as they have their conversation with their funders and their members, that I think I would like to express that the council continues to be in full support of that project. So, regardless of, I think that our lengthening their request for the two weeks for our next meeting makes that communication a little more vague. It makes it more gray. And I would like to simply stay with the original two-week continuation so that we're supporting the work that they requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from Mr. Pipinger? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you. An office of question for Mr. Pipinger, but I'll try. Did the Veterans Foundation verbalize or indicate that they were going to reach out to the neighborhood and the gardeners in your conversations with them?
That would be my understanding.
Councilmember Greger?
Thank you, President Weld. Mr. Pipinger, I was wondering if you know if they plan to use any of that time to decide whether they are, in fact, going for the naming of the entire greenway or special area, or if they're truly focused on just part of it, or if part of this time is to try to clarify that within their own organization, because it seemed there was some confusion about that.
I wouldn't say there was confusion. I would say there was a misstatement, because what was looked at when we had the drawing up was the gardens that were there. And the understanding all along with the veterans group is that the community gardens were always going to be there. They weren't going to go away. So, I think that was the confusion upon Angeles Park yesterday, and it was more of a misstatement. But the intent to the city and what has been presented is all along has been the entire green space was going -- was being renamed.
Councilmember Beaton?
So, I only say this because it sounds like we're going to be continuing to work, well, depending on how this vote goes, continuing to work with the foundation. I, last night, I very definitively heard that there was a misunderstanding, not a misstatement. And I think if we do continue to work with these groups, it's important that we recognize that misunderstanding. When I said, you know, are we renaming the entire red line of the park, I heard multiple people within the audience say, "No, no." And so, for me, it was very clear that there was a misunderstanding about what we were talking about. And so, I really hope moving forward that staff, you know, takes that as a misunderstanding rather than a misstatement.
Any other questions for Mr. Pipinger? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to echo what Councilmember Beaton said, because I wrote down what she said. She said, you know, my, our intent is not to name the entire space, and our intent is only naming the space that are developed, that we are developing. So, she sounded very for sure in her statement, which was part of the, but yours, so it's very confusing. I agree. She seemed very clear in that. So, I just want to put that up here.
Any other questions? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Pipinger. I just want to add a little bit on to Councilmember Bergy's question that she asked about your understanding of working with the different user groups. I think Councilmember Bergy asked, did you hear them verbalize? Did the veterans group verbalize this? And I want to just ask very directly, is that, like, how, what? directly, is that, like, how, what's your confidence level that they will be working with the gardening group and the Neighborhood Association and the Veterans Unity Group?
What I've heard, and this is through verbal conversation, is that they were going to reach out to those groups. And what I mean by those groups is that it would be the Neighborhood Association and the Gardeners Group.
Any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Beaton?
This is more of a question rather than a question from Mr. Pipinger, but thank you. I, so I'm, I'm thinking about the two weeks versus this 60-day period. And while I know confidently that I will not be ready to make a decision on this in two weeks, I do feel compelled and called to honor what the Veterans Group has asked for. To think about, you know, coming back to this, perhaps with the exact same decision as we have today in two weeks is a little daunting, but, but I guess I, I would entertain retracting that, my amendment to the motion if, if there's interest in that. So.
Mr. Loar?
Is it Mr. Loar? Mr. Loar, did you have any?
No.
In regards to the idea of retracting the, the amendment to 60 days, Councilmember Beaton expressed interest in possibly withdrawing that. Are you in support or against?
I am against that. I, I, the name of the Veteran Tribute Park, I don't think that anybody rejecting that name. I think that the, the rejection that I heard about it is like two groups are fighting together. And I want to compromise and have the Veteran Tribute Group, people reach out to those Neighborhood Associations or the gardening, and they're talking. And then it comes a solution for us and say that we have talked and agreed for this. And I think the name is, I don't have any objection of that, but I'd like them to reach out and talk before making a decision. That's why.
Sure. And again, the question is whether or not we go back to, to, to two weeks to, to the next meeting to discuss this further, or as Councilmember Beaton mentioned, possibly retracting her 60-day amendment?
I can agree with, I will agree with that, but I say, maybe if I say two weeks to 60 days or something like that, you know, instead of two weeks.
Come back to Councilmember Beaton?
What I would like to see, I think, is giving the, the Veterans Group two weeks to sort through what they might want. And then, once we have an answer on that, I'd like to see a, a further postponement. So, that, and what I'm hoping is that they'll, they'll make the decision to stay and, and work with some other community groups. And so, we can further postpone after, after this two-week period for, for longer collaboration on, on naming. So, I'd like to, I, I think I'd like to fully retract my amendment.
Councilmember Loar?
I wanted to, sorry.
I wanted to retract my two, if that's the case, then I'll retract the two weeks and see what they come back. You know, I really like to see they reach out to the other group and talk about in two weeks. I, I know that two weeks, I don't think that they will be having enough time to reach out to other, other four groups out there than wanting to be working together. So.
Sure. Thank you. So, we are back to the original motion by Mr. Klinkhammer and seconded by Councilmember Manuel.
Thank you, President Weld. Want to just look through kind of sequencing here. I can appreciate all the points that have been made and trying to be timely. So, if indeed we are looking at two weeks, kind of the way our packet goes is then there would have to be an answer by next Wednesday and then publication by next Thursday, which is certainly less than two full weeks. So, could we get some clarification around what we mean by two weeks? Is it indeed the meetings of July 22 and 23, or would this be August 12 and 13?
City Attorney Nick?
A variety of titles tonight. Postponement to, to two weeks for the next meeting simply means it's on your next Tuesday agenda. So, the packet deadline is, is what, what you all know it to be, the Wednesday prior. But when you postpone things legislatively, it's not an open issue of whether it's on or not on, or whether we hear back or don't. It's simply on your next agenda. You know, that's a legislative direction. So, if this, if this resolution would pass, the item would appear again on your next Tuesday legislative agenda. You referenced earlier, if you wanted to hear another public discussion, you'd have to indicate that. Unless you do, it, it comes back to exactly in the status when you postponed it.
Thank you, City Attorney Nick. Councilmember Manuel?
Thank you very much. Pardon me. What, what happens in the event, I don't even know if this would happen, but what if the Veterans Group says, the Tribute Foundation, just to be very clear, what if they say, we would like a name change? Maybe they won't, but since we have it in writing, then what happens procedurally? Do the, do we then make an amendment? We still publish it as-is. We receive a request to change it and then could amend it that night? Or how, what are the options for council to kind of weigh through and make sure we're not in a quagmire?
City Attorney Nick?
Your options would be the same as they are right now, which, like I said, I got asked that question last night, same answer. So, you can approve the name as proposed. You can turn the name down. You can do something that's a version of that that's relatively close to, you know, the item's in front of you legislatively. So, you have a wide array of options to name, not name, or name it, you know, some other version of it. And you have that option right now, or you have it in two weeks, or you have it in 60 days.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Not to confuse an already confusing subject, but if I altered my motion to become a motion to postpone for a period not to exceed, not to extend beyond the meeting of September 10th, 60 days, the equivalent of two months' period, that affords them the option to bring it back in two weeks or to devote additional time to whatever they want, if they need it. If that's, that's allowed, I would change my motion to.
I guess if I could weigh in or ask, again, that would, then it would not automatically be on the agenda to extract. So, then they would have to have it worked out by next Wednesday.
Whatever they want.
I guess I'm, I'm not in support of the change. I'd rather see it two weeks to give them the time to, to meet with their board, the two full weeks. I think limiting it to the next seven days in order to, you know, really makes it difficult to even plan on them having any ability to make a decision by the, by next Wednesday. So, we have a motion to postpone for two weeks to allow the applicant to meet with their stakeholders and make a decision on how they wish to proceed. And there's a second. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Manuel?
Thank you, President Weld. I just want to be clear that I'm understanding this. So, then this is for the next council meeting. Okay. I'd like to perhaps ask for a friendly amendment that this would include a public hearing on the Monday night. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Beaton?
Can we get some clarification from staff that postponing until two weeks still gives us an opportunity to postpone again if we need to?
City Attorney Nick?
It does.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Discussion on the MOU, I, I think it'd be important to get further clarification at some point about the MOU because, you know, I pull up the language here and it very clearly states that funds of $2 million have to be raised. This goal should be deposited in cash with the city prior to going out to bid on the project. And I understand the phasing. I just want to make sure that we're actually following the, the understanding that we've had with the, with the foundation that we signed, that we passed as a council. That's all.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Bergy?
I just have a, a comment that I, I do think, just to weigh in on the timing, I do think it will take longer than two weeks, especially with Councilmember Manuel's point that they have to have it figured out in about a week and a half, which seems like pretty short time. But the reassurance that we can postpone, I guess, makes me want to support this. But, I mean, I can be optimistic that everyone can come together and everyone's schedules are clear, that, and they can come to agreement. So, but, so I am supportive of this.
And just to clarify, they would have the full two weeks because it will automatically be on the agenda with this postponement?
Okay. Oh, so it doesn't need it? Yes.
Councilmember Manuel, did you have a?
Thank you, President Weld. I, I want to speak about, I guess I, I heard a verbal understanding that it's likely that the Veterans Tribute Foundation would work with the gardeners and the Neighborhood Association. I'd like to just strongly encourage the foundation to work with the Veterans Unity Group who have said they're not advocating one way or another. They want to help with the process. So, I, I would just implore all of the groups to utilize each other's strengths to find the solution. The other thing that I'd like to say before we take a vote is, I think something probably pretty personal and something I feel a lot of empathy for. I've started to read through a book in my own, my own personal life. It's about healing and, and dealing with trauma. And in the very beginning of the book, it talks a lot about the trauma that people experience from wars. And through research, through war veterans, they learned about PTSD. It's an unfortunate thing to have to even discover. And what people need most when they've experienced trauma or abuse is to be welcomed and have a safe space to come and heal and to be honored. And I had no intention of thinking about city council work when I was listening to this audiobook. And yet, my heart swelled with just the hope that our community can make a permanent space for people who live here or who have moved here or are visiting here who need to heal as part of their, improving their human condition and a place to celebrate, like the young father who came and said that he's going to take his son to this park as part of his healing journey and talk about dad. And so, I, I just think it's so important beyond this whole nomenclature situation that our community is in. Like, the point is to have a space for people to heal. And I really want to see that here in our community.
Councilmember Beaton?
I, I also wanted to kind of express my appreciation for what we heard last night. I feel extremely compelled by the stories that we heard. And I feel like yester, the stories that we heard yesterday really kind of codified this, like, feeling of greater understanding for why we, we need this project in our community. And I also have been able to reflect on how important of a healing space this is for the gardeners there, too. And I, I think that these two things coming together is so beautiful. And, and I think it's not only going to be a place for healing, but it's going to be a place for building community with people you may never would have built community with otherwise, which is why it makes me so sad that this has happened. And I think the, the one thing that I want to add is that I think that this, this space has such beautiful potential, but to settle on a decision in the state that things are in now with such conflict is really doing a disservice to this project and to everybody involved. Those people that we heard from last night with those really compelling stories from both sides deserve to have a space free of conflict. And so, I really hope, I guess this is a call to the community groups and the people involved, as well as to staff, to really invest in repairing trust and rapport because this space has beautiful potential, but it's not going to get there without doing the work. And, and I think that everyone needs to come together to gain a deeper understanding and find a, a name that's going to be inspiring to everybody. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. And just to echo that, I think, you know, as was written yesterday in this letter that we, we received from the Veterans for Unity, the importance of making sure that there is a civic dialogue, an open dialogue between the different organizations, the users that are in this space is vitally important to making sure that it has that strong foundation of trust. And we heard from veterans, not only who have been involved in the foundation, with the foundation, who are seeking to bring this tribute into the park, but we also heard from veterans who have been gardeners for many years, who are also on their own journey and their own path of healing through their connection to community and to the soil and to growing food and the importance of that. And so, I think that, and what I heard over and over and is important to remember, is that there is a benefit, I think, for gardeners, for veterans, as well as for the Neighborhood Association that has been so adamant about how to improve that area for a long time. So, I just think, again, if, if, if this, if this current conflict is still in place by the time that we make a decision on this name, that does not bode well when potentially other issues may come up down the line, whether it's expansion possibilities, whether it's different groups like the Peace Group that has come forward with the idea of, of another, you know, a monument, or whether it's some other user group that we haven't even thought of right now that could use that 15 acres of space. If we're not setting that tone of collaboration from the get-go, that's where I think issues could, could actually be much more contentious than what we're seeing right now around the naming. So, that's why I think it's important, Councilmember Loar, too, recognizes that this has to be done right from the beginning with all sides buying in on it.
Any other discussion from council? So, again, the motion is to go out to our next meeting with a public hearing on Monday. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Manuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Loar?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Benjamin?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Agenda item number 14. Agenda item number 14, a resolution authorizing the City of Eau Claire to conduct the City Hall Open House on Thursday, July 25, 2019, on Dewey Street. Mr. Solberg.
This open house that we are planning to hold is in association with the soon-to-be-completed renovation of the north and south wings of City Hall. We hope to have an open house on July 25. Festivities occurring from 3 until 8:00 p.m. Looking at having a ribbon cutting around 5:00 p.m. for the buildings. Food trucks have been invited. We're providing guided tours of City Hall and then also hosting in the parking lot behind City Hall, an opportunity for departments to show what city, what the different city departments do, kind of a informational opportunity, informational outreach opportunity for the public. The bottom, the bottom of the invite here just shows a sneak peek at what we hope to showcase with the city manager's area of City Hall in the left during renovation and what it's looking like currently. The project, or the open house was presented to the Special Events Committee and was approved. And with that, I will take any questions.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Solberg? Councilmember Gregert.
Thank you, President Weld. Mr. Solberg, congratulations on having a date here for showcasing all the hard work. Yes, there was a, in the resolution, it says that the city will be selling merchandise and other items. I was wondering what you had in mind for that, or if that's different departments selling?
We're not selling city merchandise, that's what the intended for the food trucks that will be there, that were invited. So it's a private transaction, it isn't going through the, through the city. What we're hoping to do is just have an opportunity for some games with our rec division. Food trucks will be on Dewey Street. We're, the proposal or the application includes closing Dewey Street from Grand Avenue to Eau Claire Street. The fire department will have their vehicles out on the apron or out on the Dewey Street to help entertain and show what do they do, as well as presence from other departments. So, yeah, that's intended to be with the food trucks.
Okay. Councilmember Clinkhammer.
Approximate, ooh, it works. An approximate date yet of when we can take occupancy?
Yes, we are looking at the, this is a Thursday, July 25. Our first furniture arrivals to reoccupy will show up on Monday, July 29. And there's about three weeks' worth of assembly for the furniture. So we're tentatively not overly committing, but to be conservative, we're looking at Monday, August 26 of being back into City Hall. So it would be the week before Labor Day weekend.
Yippee.
Yes, it's, 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 the old gems have shined up nicely in there, so.
That's great. City Manager Peters.
Thank you, Council President. I'll just add to that, then, we would anticipate that the first council meeting back in the facility would be the first meeting in September.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Solberg? I don't see any. Thank you for coming up. On a motion by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Emanuel, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
And that item passes. Agenda item number 15, a resolution approving a donation of an indoor wall art mural at Hobbs Ice Arena. Mr. Pippinger.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
Before the City Council is a resolution to approve a donation of public art for the Hobbs Ice Arena called "Dream Start Here." The Eau Claire Youth Hockey, Eau Claire Figure Skating Club, Riverside Bike and Skate, Mr. Mike Sullivan, Mr. Denny Zalko have collaborated together to contribute a mural of wall art for the Hobbs Ice Arena that celebrates the history of hockey and figure skating in the Eau Claire area from the youth level all the way to the professional ranks. The theme of the mural is "Dream Start Here," which is symbolic of the many successes of the young people who have made their starts here at our facility and moved on to other successes in their lives connected to the Hobbs Ice Arena. The artist of this is Ms. Tan Kozin, and she's part of the figure skating group. As you walk into Hobbs, into the main area, straight ahead would be the Akervik Rank, and on that south wall that we'd be looking at would have the initial mural that would go up with the dream start here, going through the youth hockey program, starting from mini mites, mites, squirts, pee-wees, to bantams, then also to the high school teams, including the Eau Claire Stars, which is the girls' hockey program. And two years ago, they won the state championship, including up to the high school boys program from Eau Claire North and Memorial, into some of our youth participants that went all the way to playing in the U.S. Hockey Team for that won gold in the juniors, all the way to high-level collegiate level and also to the pro level. So we've had kids that have started in our program that have gone all the way to that level. This blocked-out area on that southern wall is an area where the restrooms are, so that's why it's blocked out. Then it goes down into the area where we have our rec program that involves the open skating and lunchtime skating. So we included that as part of the mural. On the wall, if you, as you come into the Hobbs Ice Arena, you go to the right, you go to the Hughes Rank, and on that wall, which would be on the east wall, we include the figure skating group. And we didn't forget about our Zamboni drivers because without them, the ice would not stand up very long. Public art consists of those displays of art installed on or within city parks, green space, or other city-owned property. The Public Art Regulation Ordinance covers the requirements for contributions of public art such as this. The application and insurance required for this request is part of the submittal. The Waterways and Parks Commission recommended approval of this donation at their June 26 meeting with the recommendation that the group look at including more diversity in the athletes being portrayed. And the group is actually looking into that. One of the, one of the requirements that they have on this wall art is that these are players that are from the Eau Claire area and that actually play in this, so it was important that we're finding, we find those athletes within this group. So they're, they're looking at, seeing if there's more diversity. But there are, you know, within the figure skating group, we do have a boy represented along with some, some of the other skaters that are in the minority. And then also, within the hockey, we have the girls represented in that part. So you really can't see much of them because they're, especially hockey players, they're, they got everything pretty much covered with protective equipment, so. There is not anybody from the group, but Mr. Chris Bell is here, who is from the Eau Claire, he's part of the Eau Claire Youth Hockey Program that actually provided the insurance for the group and did the application. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Bell would be happy to come up and answer any questions also.
Let me go, I'm sorry, Councilmember Beaton.
Could you, so I was part of the discussion on Waterways and Parks about exploring opportunities to show more diversity on this mural. It was expressed that there may be kids who aspire to be skaters and look at the mural and see that they're not represented, people that look like them aren't represented. And I think it's, I definitely agree. And so I guess, Mr. Pippinger or Mr. Bell, I was wondering if you could offer more specifics on exactly what's been done since the meeting two weeks ago to, to find any opportunities for that? If there, if it's presented, if you found any sort of opportunities, or if you're still looking?
I would maybe defer to Mr. Bell on that, he's part of that program that was looking at that. But I know they are looking with their artists on it.
I cannot give you any specifics, other than I did make a phone call that same evening from the Parks and Waterway Commission, and also I sent out a follow-up email, and I included Mr. Pippinger. And everybody seemed confident that we would find something. I know specifically a couple of individuals who are in the program that just weren't a part of the photo opportunity, but I believe that we'll reach out to them in some form or fashion. And so I know they will be trying to attain that goal, but I can't give 100% assurance that it's going to come to fruition, that we are giving it a good effort.
Okay. Good follow-up? So if we were to approve this tonight, then what would happen to achieve that goal after this?
So I believe the way it was worded from the Waterways Commission was that we would give it an effort, and it was approved, it was recommended under that. So I did ask that question, and I posed it in email, and I believe I left it to Mr. Pippinger to decide at what point have we met that effort. So I defer to you as to leaving it to Mr. Pippinger as to when we've met that effort. It's our intent and goal to achieve that, but I cannot say for certain that that will get there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Worthman.
Is there a way, I don't think I see it in there, but is there a way that we could include referees as well? There's a lot of kids and others that are referees in this system, and I think it'd be a great shout-out.
I, you know, and I do appreciate that, in the sense that it's getting more difficult to find referees nowadays, to step up, to take on that task, especially with parents, me included. Respectfully, though, it might be a little too late in the game for that. I think it would require a complete redrawing. And I'm, you know, not saying necessarily no, but if you don't have a strong opinion on that, my preference would that we wouldn't move forward without that and maybe focus on some of the other requests that have been placed on us.
Any other questions? Chief Baller, Mr. Pippinger? I don't see any. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So on a motion by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Lor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kristofferson.
Thank you, Council President. I simply want to say that public art is always a wonderful environment for the students and for the sport. I like the idea that this is all our people, so not only might you see someone of your own gender there, but you would have a good likelihood of being able to contact them, which may, in my opinion, bridge that gap for the fact that there might not be the racial diversity that we would hope Eau Claire could aspire to in our future. So I would, just knowing that these are our local individuals and would be available to inspire kids that are in the Hobbs Arena, to me would weigh out the fact that we may not have the diversity we really hope we have. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
And that item passes. Agenda item number 16, a resolution authorizing operating a capital budget appropriation for fiscal year 2019. As this item amends the budget, a two-thirds vote of the elected members or eight affirmative votes is required for adoption. Mr. Winsanz is here, if any council members have questions? Questions for staff? Seeing none, on a motion by Councilmember Kristofferson and seconded by Councilmember Clinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Agenda item number seven, I'm sorry, that item passes. Agenda item number 17, a resolution vacating a portion of Gibson Street from Graham Avenue to the Chippa River. This item was postponed from the December 11, 2018, to March 26, 2019, council meetings. Staff is requesting further postponement until agreements have been reached. Mr. Solberg.
This item has been before the City Council several times previous. We're requesting a postponement. Staff is in support of the vacation of the Gibson Street corridor. A parcel is going to be dedicated at the end of it. However, with discussions, there were a number of easements that we are working with the petitioners for to make sure we have ironed out and have agreement with the easements. Here is a corridor, in particular with like a visual easement to, there's discussion about the loading dock through here, and we want to make sure that we maintain that visual corridor easement through here, as well as for trails and future use. So we're negotiating with the petitioners for the street vacation. Expect to have a resolution for those easements in the not-too-distant future. So we are requesting a postponement until we have those agreements finalized.
Any questions for Mr. Solberg? I don't see any. Is there a motion to postpone?
I move the motion, I move the item to postpone, so agreements have been reached.
Is there a second?
A second.
Councilmember McGregor. Any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Agenda item number 18, sorry, a resolution approving a certified survey map with half of the right-of-way dedication for the extension of Comet Court as shown on planning file Mr. Ivory.
Good afternoon, good evening. Scheffler Land Surveying is requesting approval of a certified survey map or a CSM for an acre and a half parcel located south of Eddie Lane. This is the parcel located right here. Here's Eddie Lane. Here is Frisbee Lane, and then this is Comet Court going north-south, located right here. This is the actual CSM. CSM consists of four lots and then the right-of-way dedication of the west portion of Comet Court, which actually was officially mapped back in 1966 when most of that area was, was, was plotted out. Since the CSM involves a dedication of right-of-way, council approval is necessary. The property is Zoned R1, which is single-family residential. Lot 4, located right here, actually has an existing single-family home located on it. Lot 1, which would be located along the dedicated Comet Court, would be a buildable lot based on our zoning code and our subdivision code. And then lots 2-
You, Council President. I was wondering, so will Comet Court, will it go all the way through Eddie Lane, or it will, oh my gosh.
(inaudible)
Phone pick that up. Will it go through the, to Eddie Lane?
No.
It will?
This is where Frisbee Court comes in, in this area here. Comet Court goes up to this location and then cul-de-sacs right here. And this is actually the official map from back from 1966, and this shows the cul-de-sac located right here. And I do have another map. This is from our GIS system, basically showing Frisbee Lane, Comet Court, and then this shows the official map here. So the area that we're talking about is located in this parcel right in here.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Ivory? Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you. I'm sure, I think I know the answer, but just to confirm, did the homeowners around this get notified of the CSM?
That question came up at the Plan Commission, and I was not at the Plan Commission, but I'm talking with the other staff. And the, it was, the Plan Commission was informed that, well, there's not an official requirement that we have to notify property owners for a CSM or plat, or for site plans. But it's my understanding that the owner of this property here, as part of the CSM process, had gone around and talked to a number of the property owners. I can't guarantee that they talked to all of them, but I know that some of them have been contacted, because some of the abutting property owners are interested in possibly acquiring some of those lots.
Okay. I have one more question.
Sure.
So will this come before council again, or is this the last time we will see it?
It'll come back to council when we have a couple things. One is when the east portion of Comet Court is subdivided, then that'll come back in terms of the dedication of the east side of the road here. And then at a future date, in terms of an extension of utilities, will it come back to the council?
Okay. Okay, I have one more question.
Okay.
So there's no house right now on the lot on the east side?
No, I'll go back to the aerial here.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking.
Again, with the aerial here, this is the parcel we're talking about here. The area to the east is a vacant lot right now also. It's my understanding that the owner of this lot also owns these two lots up here along Eddie Lane. And I've heard different stories in terms of whether he is interested or not interested in developing. Early on, I heard he was not interested, but now in the last couple of days, I've heard differing stories.
Okay. You read my mind about the next question.
Any other questions for Mr. Ivory? I don't see any. Thank you for coming up. On a motion by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Greggert, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Greggert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lohr.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
And that item passes. That is the end of our business agenda. There are no ordinance for action and no ordinance for introduction this evening, which brings us to announcements from City Manager Peters.
Mr. Council President, well, I only have one, and that is, many of you have signed up for a very exciting opportunity. We have next week, and if you haven't, I would encourage you to carve out some of the time if you could, but the Wisconsin Coalition for Affordable Housing is putting on a two-day conference here in Eau Claire on a Home for Everybody. So that's next Wednesday and Thursday. And even if you can't go for all of it, if you'd want to go for part of a day, take a look at that agenda, because I think it's a really good training opportunity for all of us. And I look forward to seeing several of you there. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any announcements from council? I don't see any. There are no objections. We are adjourned. Thank you.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the City of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.